Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in Municipal Building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
President.
Councilman Kukoviac.
President.
Councilwoman Spango.
President.
Councilwoman McCartney. Council President Garino. Mayor Parisi.
Don't step on me, my friend.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to what I think is the only combined police and fire promotion in the history of the township. I was speaking to my counterpart here, Chief Abbott, the other day. He doesn't remember his, I think, 75 years of the police department. And Chief Caper the other day. And we don't remember anyone celebrating in such an occasion. And I know, on behalf of the chief and myself, we're very proud to be part of such a historic moment. So I want to welcome you here. I'd like to call for Council President to lead us stand. Our pledge of allegiance.
Oh, God. Present!
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order!
Those who have seats remain standing, please, for our invocation. Let us pray. Lord our God, we give you thanks for your countless blessings of all of us gathered here. In particular way, we thank you for the many women and the West Orange Fire Department and Police Department. They're dedicating themselves to lives of service with safety and protection of their fellow citizens. For the willingness to put others before self. We ask that you continue to protect each of them as they fulfill their respective duties. In a special way, we ask for your special guidance and grace upon John, Bill, Danny, Joe, and Rich as they are promoted this evening and assume even greater responsibilities. Many are called to service in our world. Fewer are called to these noble services. And still fewer are called to lead those in the fire and police departments. So help each of them develop and grow in their strength, wisdom, and compassion as faithful stewards of these new ranks. Help nurture the members in their charge to provide for them a safe return home. We ask all of this of your greatly.
Order guard! Up down! Guard! Left, right! Order!
Again, welcome. Thank you. I want to thank, first of all, Captain McGee for playing the bagpipes at the West Orange Fire Department. I want to thank him again for playing for our honorees. And I want to thank our combined Honor Guard Unit of the Police and Fire Department. It's a very unique situation. Again, it's a very unique ceremony we have. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council president, members of the council, for the continued support of the Police Department and the Fire Department. I also want to thank the administration for helping putting this together tonight. You know, this is a great time. Every time we have a promotion, I feel excited because there's a new growth in the department. There's a new spirit of leadership. There's a new spirit of how we serve this town. And this is such a fantastic way to do it together on the steps of our government here in West Orange, the Township Hall, to celebrate with our police and fire personnel together. As you know, I always profess how much I love the Fire Department of West Orange. I love the way it works, the fact that our people are dedicated to doing everything they can to this job. But I also have a personal affinity to the police because many of you know that many of my family is police officers. My son is a police officer. I raised him right and became a cop anyway. And my father-in-law served here with distinction with the West Orange Police Department for many years. In fact, one of his best friends is a sheriff officer named James Sayers. And ironically, his grandson is getting promoted today. So I have a lot of affinity and special fondness for the fire and the police service and all the emergency services. So to all the promoters, I salute you tonight. I congratulate you tonight. And I hope you're ready to hit the ground running tomorrow when you report back to work. So congratulations. And we'll continue with the ceremony. I'll turn it over to my counterpart, Chief James Abbott.
I'd like to thank the mayor and council for putting this on tonight and putting forward the funds to make this happen. And Pete said just about everything, so I'm not going to bore you as you did. The good news for Jack, if you're all there, right? You don't have to spend Thanksgiving at the Golden Corral again. You're welcome back in Billy's house. He says, "Just don't show up empty-handed." Mayor will come forward and issue the oath of office. I believe we can start with this.
I, William Sayers Jr., do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States. And in this state, under the authority of the people, I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the office of police sergeant according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Next promoter, from Sergeant to rank Lieutenant, Jonathan Schlepper. Before I turn this back over to Chief Smarado, I'd just like to say that both Sergeant Sayers and Lieutenant Schlepper have served the Police Department now for many years. We both appreciate it in honor. Neither one of them ever, of course, need one day of aggravation in their entire career. And, I don't know, Jack, I can say that. But it's really a pleasure and an honor to see both people promoted. Again, Jonathan, the second time. Billy, you've served as an acting sergeant when other people wouldn't. And that didn't go unnoticed and it wasn't forgotten. It was without pay. It was just all the responsibility and all the headaches and the aggravation with no remuneration. But it didn't go, as I said, unnoticed and we thank you. Chief Smarado?
The first individual to be pulled up to be promoted is going to be firefighter Richard Smith. For those who don't know Richie, Richie is an avid physical fitness nut. His dedication to his side work, so to speak, with physical fitness shows true to his commitment to the Fire Department. You know, and from what I understand stories, when he was a kid, Richie was given a big ladder truck when he was a kid. He picked it up, put it over his head, and he said, "I lift things up, put them down." That was his first word spoken. But by five years old, he was bench pressing 250. Richie has done a fantastic job the last 14 years since he started, right after or right prior to 9/11. And he's done a tremendous job since he's come here. And he's been acting in the captain's capacity for the last two or three years. He's done his work professionally. And I know, I'm comfortable that when he takes the position as a permanent captain, that he's going to do an outstanding job. I want to congratulate him.
I apologize. I hear that people in the back can't hear the score against. We'll hold it up for you for the next two. Our next candidate, Joe Fabulous. Firefighter Joseph Batula. If there's anyone in the department who has the passion for the history of the department and the future of the department, I don't think there's many people rival Joe because he loves what he does. He loves being a firefighter. He loves being a West Orange firefighter. And he just, what we like to have people like him to brandish our name and celebrate what we do in the fire service. And I'm very proud to be having Joe promoted tonight. I'm glad you weren't coming from the shore. So I'm very happy to introduce firefighter Joseph Batula, who will be sworn into Fire Captain.
I, Joseph Batula, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Fire Captain according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Pat Batula, I was just informed that you brought around ranks, you know. Just saying. Our last promoter, certainly not the least. It's great to promote people within your organization, people that you've helped hire and work with and everything else. But it's really great when you not only get to do that with your colleagues, but it's also a personal friend. And it's even better when you have the opportunity to promote your personal friend, your pal, twice in your career as the chief. And so I'm really honored and I'm really humbled at the fact that I can promote my friend Danny for a second time to Deputy Chief. But Captain Shelley, I'd like to please come up and give some words as Deputy Chief.
I, Daniel Shelley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same, to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all of the duties of the office of Deputy Fire Chief according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
The table's not set out yet. Daniel, let's go to the other table, please. I could call the promoters up to this table, please. It's a tradition in the Fire Department, and we want to extend that tradition today to our police officers, also to our spouses. Whenever we study for exams, for those who have studied and have been successful and those who have tried very hard to get to this position, it takes a lot out on them. But also, we realize that it puts a great strain toll on the family because it's important. So our way, as from the Township and the Fire Department Police Department to our spouses, what we do is we buy this small token of appreciation to give to our spouses on behalf of it. It's just a small gesture saying thank you. So gentlemen, if you can pick up the flowers in front of you and present them to your spouses, it would be greatly appreciated. Captain Legord, tired colors?
Order guard! Left, right! Tired colors? Up down! Piss! Order guard! Left, right!
Council President, thank you for allowing us to take time. It's your meeting. It's a very important part of your meeting. It's a very, very important part for us to participate. I want to thank you. I'm going to turn this large ceremony back over to you. And ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our ceremony. And I want to thank the county mayor for participating.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for such a great ceremony. It's just another example of the wonderful people that work and serve as the residents of the Township of West Orange. I'd like to congratulate, on behalf of my council colleagues, I could congratulate a little bit of Dave. We expect a lot from you, but just remember, the Township Council along with the mayor are always there to support you. They're always there for you. So on that note, I'd like to close our outdoor public meeting and take a quick break and move our regular public council meeting inside. Again, congratulations, promoters, to Chief Abbott, to Chief Smarado, to Mayor Parisi. And have a great weekend. Congratulations, guys. We're right there for you.
We're going to continue our conference agenda just with council liaison, and then we'll go right to our public meeting. So I'll open the floor to my council colleagues. Councilman Cirillo, any comments?
No reports, seconds, President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kukoviac.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Spango.
No reports.
And Councilwoman McCartney.
You know, I have plenty. Wait. Sorry. Sorry, just came in.
I can't see with these glasses.
Wasn't ready. Sorry.
Okay. Councilwoman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sorry for the delay. We just came in. Congratulations to all the police and fire, just went through their promotion ceremony. Congratulations. Minor couple saved the dates. One is, and congratulations to the Badlani family with the signing into law, the Nikhil's law, which will affect people taking their driver's license to pledge "Stop means stop" when you're taking your license. The Badlani Foundation also has a 5K run, 3K walk. The date is Sunday, September 20th. Up at the high school, registration's online, Nikhil Badlani Foundation. We have the Thomas Edison National Historic Site on October 3rd, Saturday evening. This is the Muckers Bowl. That's what Edison called his workers. He gave them local food to work through the night. And everyone's invited to give you local food so that you can party and enjoy the evening. This is Saturday, October 3rd, at the Thomas Edison National Historic Site on Main Street. Following day, October 4th, this is the first time that the Chamber of Commerce and the Public Relations Commission and many other township organizations are working together to put together Community Health and Wellness Fair. This is on October 4th, from 1:00 to 4:00, at Liberty Middle School. Admission is free. If you have a business or organization in health field, please go to westorangechamber.com. Everything is free to exhibit and for admission.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'm sure there's more, but...
I'm sure there's more. But I'm not going to repeat because you might do the same, because I will not repeat. Thank you, my council colleagues. We'll now go into our public meeting. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the Municipal Building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo.
President.
Councilman Kukoviac.
President.
Councilwoman Spango.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Council President Garino.
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Pledge of allegiance?
We did it outside.
We did it outside, okay.
But we should do it.
We should do it again for the...
Okay. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
We have to wait a couple of minutes to have the podium brought back in. Just to make a few notes, is that... Uh, just to, just to make a few, uh, a few notes, is that, remember, is that during public comment, you have your, your meetings to talk. This is where you should speak. The only other time you will get to speak on any item will be when any ordinances on second and final reading are brought to the floor. Any other time, you will not be able to make comment to the township council. I can make a note, too, is that with the township pool, um, Director Keo, and thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, um, the tail ender membership package for the Ginny Dunkle Pool starts this Saturday and runs through Labor Day. It's a great opportunity to enjoy the remainder of the summer at the West Orange Pool. The rates are greatly reduced. As an example, two parents with two kids can join for $170. That breaks down to $6 a day. If you need more information, go to our website at www.westorange.org, and you'll find the pool, and click on the pool, you get more information.
Council President. Council President, if I could, you had, you've made that statement, uh, I think at the last meeting, this meeting, and I just wanted to ask, and maybe we can get some sort of legal ruling on this. If you look at, uh, Article 3 of our, of our ordinances that prescribes how the council meetings are supposed to work, uh, Section 3 dash 15 dot 1, In Order of Business, uh, says in part, "A persons other than council members may be permitted to address the township council in the proper order of business and as herein further provided. A person present may, upon recognition by the chair, be heard in other, in order of communications and petitions and at such other times as the council may specifically permit." And then it says, "In the case of a resolution prior to adoption, the president of the council shall recognize all persons interested, and each shall be given the opportunity to be heard for a minimum of three minutes, which time may be extended by the consent of the council president." Now, I know that hasn't been the practice since I've been on the council, uh, but, uh, I, I think if it's in our, in our ordinance, we should, this might be a good time to just, uh, address this and maybe get a legal ruling on whether, uh, that's something that we should be doing.
Mr. Kayser, any comments, please?
Well, it hasn't been done, not only since you've been a council member, but since I've been here, which is since 1998, um, or well before that. I mean, I've lived here since 1976, and I used to attend council meetings from time to time. I don't remember that ever being the way it was done. Um, that being said, um, our council rules were passed by ordinance, they don't have to be passed by ordinance, they can be passed by resolution, they can be changed at any time by a vote of, of the council. Um, I think the important thing is that the members of the public have the right to speak about these things. That's obviously critical. Um, when that time comes, I don't think it's so important, as long as you're affording the opportunity for everybody to speak and let them know when it's proper to speak so that they don't miss the opportunity, I think that's satisfactory. But, look, when you have rules that you don't use, you probably ought to change them to the way that you operate, so...
Good point. But, um, Mr. Ser- uh, Mr. Kayser, but the thing is, when they have their five minutes in public comment, that's when, then they have copies of the agenda, and they have copies of the resolutions and ordinances.
Right.
That is the right time to bring up these comments.
Yeah, I understand what your position is, and I'm not disagreeing with it.
Right.
Um, all I'm saying is that the, the rule as read by Councilman Kukoviac is accurate, and it's there, and maybe we ought to change it.
Okay, good point, Mr. Kayser, thank you.
Yeah, we could certainly do that, if, if I could follow up just a second, Council President. Um, the only reason why it may be important is that if legally or by ordinance, somebody might be able to speak for a longer period of time than five minutes. Uh, like, for instance, tonight, we have, uh, three different redevelopment resolutions, plus a, uh, plus the ordinance, but we have a separate public meet, hearing on that. But it would be a situation where, under our existing rules in our ordinance, somebody would be able to speak for three minutes for, on three resolutions, that gives them nine minutes. But if they can only speak for five minutes, perhaps until we change the rule, if that's what the council wants to do, perhaps until we change the rule, if somebody comes up and speaks for five minutes on, on a situation where, uh, you know, they want to speak about multiple resolutions, uh, and want more than the five minutes, perhaps we could just, if somebody wants to say that, we could just give them a lead.
Can I ask a question? Why was this ever brought up before?
Well...
It's a big issue.
That, I'd, I'd like to know, why is it bringing, being brought up tonight and not any other meetings where we've had meetings just like this with the same type of ton content?
Because this is a big issue.
Why?
This is a very big issue.
Okay.
I'm okay, but we have our legal counsel right here, and that...
All right.
I think questions can be answered.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that would be the only thing. This is a really complicated situation.
You're not filibustering.
We've got three different resolution.
Pardon?
If anybody comes up and wants the five minutes but wants more to talk about these specific...
Allow five minutes, right.
But if they want to speak more, when they could have had maybe nine...
Five minutes is...
I'd be giving more than five minutes at this point, not during the...
That would be fine.
Yes, sir. Council President, I mean...
I don't think it's going to come up, I just wanted to...
No, it's understandable, Councilman. Yes, sir.
Obviously, if it so chooses, the council can relax the rules in any given situation, at any given meeting, so, I mean, it's, it's really not necessary to stick to a hard and fast rule.
No, absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
I understand, you're welcome, sir. Okay, now the podium's back in, okay. Um, we said, uh, right now, I open the floor to the general public to make comments to the township council. Just raise your hand, and I'll call you in order, as you come, Mr. Pagliisi. Good evening, sir.
I'm going to be very brief. Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Uh, just two things I want to share with you this evening. One, uh, September 11th, I put flyers out in front of you, and there's also flyers on the, your table outside. Uh, September 11th, 8:00 AM, is our annual Essex Remember Ceremony at the Eagle Rock Reservation. Uh, the public is invited. Uh, and two, uh, tomorrow at 12 o'clock, we are going to have a groundbreaking ceremony at the Regatta Playground. Uh, it's, the playground is only one year old, however, the area has grown in popularity. Uh, it literally is overrun with children, which is a great thing, uh, so the county executive saw a need to expand that, so we're going to expand the playground, and that ceremony will be tomorrow, 12 o'clock, will be in the Clipper Pavilion. Again, the public is invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, Ms. Clemmensen.
Maryelle Clemmensen, for Cherrywood Circle in West Orange. Um, fast question, I believe someone from Dune is actually represented tonight, I'm not sure, but if they are, it would be nice to hear directly from them exactly what the equity contribution is from Dune for the project, and how they envision what, what their strategy is with that project going forward. They probably have an exit strategy, and it would just be nice to know what it is. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Maryelle.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, in the back, on this side? Yes, ma'am.
Susan Lenczek, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. I will state the obvious when I say that we have a representative governing body, and each of the members of this town council represents, or is supposed to represent, the members of the West Orange community. When there are issues before the council that seriously impact us, we expect the council members to research, to ask questions, and to get as much information as possible in order to make informed decisions. So I find it disturbing that when, during the last council meeting, Councilman Kukoviac asked questions about the new partnership involved in the redevelopment of the Edison Battery Factory, he was silenced by the council president at the insistence of a member of the administration. The council was doing his job, fact, the councilman was doing his job, fact-seeking and fact-checking after having researched all that he had access to. What's more, it is highly disconcerting and surprising that the assistant town attorney advised the redevelopment attorney, who was supposed to be advising the council and its members, in an email, cc-ing various administration members, but not the council, to provide as little information as possible to Councilman Kukoviac when he asked questions. Not only does it show the desire to keep one of the council members in the dark, but it also seems to indicate a desire to hide information from the public. The disrespect with which the councilman was treated was nothing short of appalling, and I believe that the administration and the council president owe him an apology. We, the citizens, have questions about the changes in the redevelopment agreement for the Edison Battery Factory. The administration indicated that there are no substantive changes in the agreement, but it seems to me that when a new partner is coming on board who will have two-thirds of the control over the project, that is a substantive change. I respectfully request that a presentation be made so that we, who are the taxpayers in this town and who stand to lose if the project falls through, can ask informed questions and make informed comments. These are the questions I have. Will you delay the vote on this ordinance and resolutions until a presentation is made to the citizens and to you, the council members? What is the harm in providing and sharing as much information about the project as possible? Regarding construction, if the developer begins the project and completes only a percentage of it, and then is unable to complete the entire project, what happens? Given the redevelopers' long history of failure to comply with the terms of the contract by frequent property tax delinquencies, failure to notify the town of the foreclosure proceeding on the 55 Lakeside Avenue property, and failure to complete this project in nearly nine years, what makes you think that the redeveloper can be trusted to comply in the future? If the redeveloper defaults on any aspect of the agreement, will you commit to taking steps to enforce the terms of the agreement by voting to declare an event of default? I have copies of these questions for each of you, and I ask that you please respond. And before I return to my seat, I wonder if, because what, the air conditioning is on in the back, it's difficult for us in the, in the back half of the room to hear, so would it be possible for you to make sure you speak directly into the microphone, because it is difficult for us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you state your last name again?
Lenczek, L-E-N-C-Z-Y-K. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, Mr., uh, Mr. Brick?
Good evening, council. Mike Brick, Chairman of the Environmental Commission. And on a lighter note, we're about to initiate our milkweed project next week for the town. We have hundreds of milkweed plants that have been given to us, or will be given to us by the Pleasantdale Chateau. They'll be in four-inch pots, and we'll have a point of distribution, though they're at no charge, and they're for the preservation of the monarch butterfly. I had mentioned this to the town council last month, and we're about to initiate this giveaway of the milkweed. It's important because this is the native species of milkweed, which is really what's important to the, um, the monarch butterfly's life cycle. It fits in with his migration north. The milkweed comes, uh, uh, comes about as they come about, and the entire United States is looking at milkweed as a way to preserve the monarch butterfly. It's their only food source, and they're a unique species that migrates north three generations, and then they fly thousands of miles back to Mexico. Um, they're worth preserving for absolutely sure, and we hope that everyone in West Orange will avail themselves of the milkweed. Um, it's a very easy plant, I put some in my garden. It's a perennial, it spreads slightly, easy to contain in a garden, it makes a beautiful yellowish flower, and in the fall, it makes a milkweed pod, and the silken, uh, seeds go flying in the air to, um, seed everywhere else. So, um, I'll have the announcement of when and where, and I hope that, uh, our West Orange residents will avail themselves of this special program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brick. Mr. Malanga, you had your hand up next, sir.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. I've been reading the many...
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, certainly. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road.
Thank you.
I've been reading the many redevelopment project documents, and at the same time, I've been rereading the history of the Peloponnesian War by the ancient Greek historian Thucydides. And I've been struck by how a work that was written 2,400 years ago is so relevant to this redevelopment project. Thucydides wrote that the, the decline and defeat of ancient Athens was inevitable when, as he put it, "Words had lost their meaning and took on new meaning," and that values changed, where deceit was lauded over integrity. Looking at these proposed agreements, I can't but help think of Thucydides. Take, for example, the modification agreement dated August 8th, 2014, between the township and Prism. What was the purpose of this agreement but to deceive the citizens of West Orange? By 2014, Prism had been the project's developer for eight years, but not performed any construction, and was continuously in arrears on its property taxes. Yet this modification agreement has a recital that begins, "Whereas, the township has determined that the redeveloper continues to possess the proper qualifications, financial resources, and capacity to implement the Phase 1 project in accordance with the redevelopment plan." When this agreement was signed on August 8th, 2014, Prism was in arrears on its property taxes by three payment quarters totaling $335,000, and had not built a single apartment. Is that possessing financial resources? I think not. The modification agreement also allows Prism to avoid being placed into default on Phase 1 of the project by claiming economic infeasibility. This provision was never in the first redevelopment agreement. Building Phase 1 was unconditional. This contract, contract change was made to protect Prism. What benefit did the people of West Orange get? Absolutely nothing. One has to ask, why protect a non-performing redeveloper in this manner? The new proposed agreement carries on this practice of coddling redevelopers. The new agreement has the same recital as the financial capacity, yet the new redeveloper, like Prism before it, has not provided any financial statements to the township. The new redeveloper has no responsibility for the 71 affording, affordable housing units that must be constructed for this project, leaving Prism the obligation to construct these for Phase 2. Since Prism has been unable to perform in Phase 1, what is the likelihood that it can perform in Phase 2 and build the affordable housing units? Most importantly, if Prism does not build the affordable housing units, does the responsibility fall to the township? The proposed agreement also permits the redeveloper to claim financial infeasibility due to a change in market conditions, and the developer could demand that the township renegotiate the agreement. Such negotiations could include a change in the use and density under the redevelopment plan. Does this mean that the entire Edison Battery Building can be affordable housing? Secrecy has also been a problem in this agreement from inception. The proposed agreement permits the redeveloper to conceal the identities of any individual owners or investors. We never know who the ultimate beneficial owners are. No bank would permit this as a protection against money laundering. Why should we? In addition, there is no new rental market study, as was prepared in 2011 by Coldwell Banker. Critically, there is no analysis as to the tax abatement, as to how much the citizens of West Orange are giving up in terms of taxes as a result of the Payment in Lieu of Taxes project. Until there is an investigation as to why the township continues to protect developers at the expense of taxpayers, this project should not be forwarded. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, Paula Dixon Taylor, Watchung Avenue. I represent my neighborhood and also the citizens of West Orange. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council President, members of the council and audience. I come to you today because in the past, Ms. Jack Sears has been very helpful with our area, um, and neighbors, people that own houses, need to keep their houses clean, okay? What was a challenge was to get the cars off the street during Clean Day in my area. Now, it doesn't seem to be as much as a, a problem. You might have one or two cars, which is... You might have one or two cars, which is good, okay? And that's with the help of the residents on Wachung Avenue. I come here to you today because I haven't been here in a while, and the last time I mentioned the garbage pickup, okay? I don't like to mention names, because people have families, but I think the garbage, who you contract out, has been doing it for a while. Correct me if I'm wrong, Roselli. I called him, and I told him, "You are throwing the garbage cans on cars, hitting cars, and you are damaging the cans. People are losing their tops or the wheels for no reason." And when I called them and complained about it, he says, "Well, I'll give you to town. Call them if you have a complaint." I thought that was a bit rude, okay? So I asked in the past to the council, when we, Wachung, had this problem before, and they said, "Well, the street cleaning machine was broke." Okay? I haven't been here in a while. Let's hope my tax dollars and their tax dollars has a new machine, or either a better one. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm posing that question to you. Is there any way that they can... They leave more garbage than they pick up, okay? And not only that, it's that the public trash cans in my area, in the park on Liberty, coming from Washington Street down to Main Street, they will sit filled for three weeks. That makes no sense. The good thing is they're using them. People are using the cans, okay? But for them to sit there... I remember after the parade, they were full before the parade, stuff was falling all out of the garbage cans, and it wasn't picked up. So I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, if you can look into that, because we all want a cleaner West Orange, no matter what area we live in. My second... I have a question. Did you know that there are no basketball courts in the area where I live? Okay? Why is that? I know that, along with the town, several years ago, Wachung Heights did the substation along with the town. There's a basketball court there that doesn't even get used now. If that's some type of a monument or something, and it cannot, I'll understand that. But we have children in that area of all ages that play basketball. Right now, the children in that area go to the neighborhood town to play basketball, which is Orange. I don't want my grandchildren going to another town just to play basketball. There's not a basketball court in Colgate Park. There aren't any. Then I thought, hmm, substation, police, children communicating, getting together, forming a relationship. Why not have that basketball be used by the children in the area? It will foster a better relationship with the police there, okay? And you can have certain times, certain ages, okay? But I would like to know, why is it that the only basketball, if a child wanted to go, would probably have to go, I think, to Conover Park? Is there a reason why we don't have any basketball courts for the children that live in that area? Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Althea Tweeden. I'm at 15 Edgar Road. I'm concerned about the building that's supposed to go up in the Edison area with the big hole on Main Street, and I'm concerned for many reasons. One is, you have 55,000 to 60,000 people visiting that area. You have from 55,000 to 60,000 people visiting that area yearly. It seems to me that you already have a captive audience if you have that many coming in. It seems to me that you'd want businesses there that would generate money for the town and for the businesses. The captive audience would probably enjoy having a nice restaurant to go to, rather than to get on the bus and I see them and head back out to wherever they go. I think they would like to have something in that area where they could stop and eat, relax after going to the Edison building, and it would probably generate money, hopefully, for the town and for the businesses that open there. The units that supposedly are going to be built, what guarantee do we have that these units will not become affordable housing? I'm really concerned about that. I know that there are 70-some units that are supposed to be for low or moderate income property units. What about the other 300 or so units? If they can't be rented, would they become affordable or low-rent units? If they do, I am sure that the West Orange townspeople will endure more taxes. They would have to, because if you know anything about Washington School, you know that it is already overcrowded. So if you have more units in that area, you're going to need another school, and we have to pay for that. You're going to probably need more police, more firemen, and of course, you know, I'm sure you all drive down Main Street between 4 and 6, and it is crowded. With 300 or more units, it's going to be even worse. I don't know if you've done a feasibility study or some kind of study for that area to see if... That it doesn't make sense to have 300 or so apartments in that area. Do we need this? I don't think so. Why don't you stop and think about it? Why is it so important to have that type of building in that area? What does someone have on you that would make you vote for this? It doesn't make sense. There must be a reason beyond the townspeople's knowledge why you are still going ahead with this project. I purchased my house in West Orange almost 40 years ago. I have also investments, and I invest in things because I want a decent return. I want money back. When I sell my house in West Orange, I want a decent return, and I don't think I'll get that if you have projects in West Orange. I am totally against it. I'm not against building something down there. That is not my concern. It is what you're planning on building in that area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tweeden. Anyone else wishing to speak to the township council? Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Robert Dreyer. I live at 12 Kinzel Lane in West Orange. As we seem to be opening a new chapter in the sad story of the Edison redevelopment, I and other people are wondering just if there are any conceivable circumstances that would cause the township to state that there's been an event of default. There have certainly been adequate reasons, adequate activities that would justify the town doing that, and yet you march on like lemmings over the cliff. I urge you to consider what your options are besides digging a deeper and deeper hole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing? Good evening. Please state your name and address, please.
Megan Burrell, 10 Crest Road, and I'm also the executive director for the Downtown Alliance. The sound is really bad in here tonight, especially for me, so if you guys can keep your voices up.
Speak loud.
You'll have no trouble hearing me, but I can't hear you guys. The Downtown Alliance, there's a few members that are here. Some folks had a funeral tonight and couldn't be here, so the lack of participation, don't take that as if we don't care or aren't concerned about the redevelopment. I can tell you that we've never had a stronger board than ever before. We've never had a clearer vision than ever before. Collectively, our leadership has never been better. It's pretty clear that the Downtown Alliance wanted to change Main Street before the redevelopment started, and we're on a road. I think that things are improving with the credit market opening up. We're seeing a lot more movement downtown. Over the past few months, we've had an addition of Dune come into the project. People are talking about it. There's private money, not having to do with tax pilots or any of that, in a lot smaller projects, but they're interested. They've bought property downtown. They want to see it developed. If you ask the planning board and the zoning board, they're going to be packed for the next six months with different projects and ideas that folks want to build downtown. A lot of it has to do with housing, but we need people downtown that want to live downtown and shop downtown. We had a meeting a few weeks ago, and the hot topic was, "When's the redevelopment going to start?" And that's pretty much what everybody asks me every day, and all of us, when we're out on Main Street and throughout our township. Getting started is really important. Nobody likes the way that looks downtown, and we, as the Downtown Alliance, encourage you all to support this ordinance on second reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrell. Mr. Meyerwitz.
Mark Meyerwitz. I live at 19 Howell Drive. Concerning the short discussion before about the public's right to be heard about all these resolutions, I think the council should err on the side of caution and let the public be heard. Let us speak out. I don't think five minutes... You have 20 resolutions tonight. I don't know if... Let's say I had an opinion on each resolution. Maybe I will. I don't think five minutes is enough to talk about 20 resolutions. So you have to find a way to let... For this council to be legal by its own laws, you should let the public speak. I mean, otherwise, you're giving us grounds to say, "Well, we're going to go to court again and throw this, you know, see if this is an illegal meeting."
Keep it to the questions, sir.
Will you keep this an illegal meeting? That's question number one. Question number two. I was reading over quickly some of the new ordinance, and there are several places where it says the bonds that are going to be floated are general obligation bonds. And you use those terms yourself, "general obligation bonds," and I'm sure by now you know that general obligation bonds require a vote by the public. So now that you're admitting these are general obligation bonds, when are you going to schedule a vote on these bonds? That's question number two. Third question is, I'm very happy that Dune Partners is coming in and that they're a substantial player in this development. So my question is, why are the citizens of West Orange still involved? Why should the average citizen who is struggling to pay their property taxes and struggling to make ends meet, why are we having a pilot program and $6.3 million in bond obligation when Dune Partners, you know, talk about millionaires and billionaires, they're very, very substantial? Why are the average taxpayers of West Orange subsidizing Dune Partners? They don't need our money. They really don't. So why are we still saddled with this obligation? That's the first thing you should get rid of. You should get rid of that right now. And I can tell you, there are a lot of people who are very upset by this, including myself, and they will make an issue of this in next year's election. I mean, if you're going to... No, that's not... I could say what I want to, Jerry. Don't shake your head. I could say what I want to. I still have two and a half minutes. That's right. Now, I also want to know, is there a resolution, or is there an ordinance in West Orange that forbids people from splitting a one-bedroom apartment into two-bedroom apartments? Because I know in Manhattan, a lot, you know, where space is really tight, people will get a one-bedroom apartment, and then they'll build like a seven-eighths wall or a dividing wall that doesn't quite reach the ceiling, and then turn the other half of that living room into an apartment, into a bedroom. So I want to know if something like that could be done in the Prism building, because then, you know, it kind of takes the... It kind of invites larger families into a one-bedroom apartment, which means more kids. And, you know, finally, I would say you need to reject this resolution, these resolutions, and go over it again, because they're very loosely written. From what I saw, the new partnership could just walk away from this deal at their whim, and then the township is going to be stuck again. And when the township gets stuck again, it means the people of West Orange and the little people of town in town are the ones who are stuck. You know, maybe there are people in West Orange who are rolling in cash, and they can afford to take on these obligations. But I know I'm not, and I don't think most people in West Orange are rolling in money, that we can subsidize Dune Partners. So I would urge you tonight to reject this resolution. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Yes, Diane Willis, 75 Woodland Avenue. Can you hear this better now? Yes. As most of us know, Prism has been delinquent on its property taxes in recent years, and more than it has been current. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars late. These delinquencies are events of default under the redevelopment agreement. The contract was only enforced once a few years ago, making Prism pay back their taxes, their back taxes. Perhaps, more importantly, this, to me, reflects on how much Prism can be trusted to do what they say they'll do. It also makes me wonder about their finances. Even now, while they're asking the council approval to change the redevelopment plan, they were delinquent on their May taxes, which they paid the day of the council meeting when the ordinance was introduced on first reading. Now they miss paying their August taxes by the deadline, according to the town's online database. Given this history, what makes you think that Prism, which appears to be managing the construction of the Edison project going forward, can be trusted to perform its obligations? I ask that each council member answer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, dear. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Morelli, I thought you were standing up first, so that's why I said...
It doesn't matter. There you go.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to go first.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Please state your name and address, please.
Michelle Martin, 36 Manchester Road. I'm pretty new to this community, and I don't have a whole lot to say about this resolution. I've heard a little bit about it. I've read a little bit about it. I'm familiar a little bit about Prism, that you've built the Parkway in Bloomfield. And so what I'm coming to is about that perspective. I'm looking at this community as a whole, and I don't do a lot of traveling down Main Street, because it is very congested, as one of the former speakers spoke about. And like I said, I'm looking at West Orange as a whole, and what I look at is, I don't want West Orange to start to look like South Orange, or Bloomfield, or Montclair. And I like what West Orange looks like. It still looks like a town where we can get around, and a town where it still looks like the suburbs. And once you start to build and build, what starts to happen is, it starts to look nicer initially, but there comes a tipping point where you start to say, "What the heck happened?" And the more you build, the more people come, and you start to say that the town that you liked originally, you go, "What the heck happened?" And I just say, "Just be careful with it. Just be careful with it." And that is just my perspective of what's happening here.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Good evening.
Good evening. Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. It's good to see you again, Mr. Mayor. Haven't seen you in a while. Tonight I'll be addressing two specific issues, issues, time permitting. They include Prism and senior transportation, and perhaps some others that come to mind. For the record, I am one of the plaintiffs in the Prism litigation. And again, I state to you all, the litigation is not holding up progress. It's Prism. They have no money, so stop beating a dead horse. They are deadbeats. We don't need them in West Orange. As concerns Prism, I would like to remind the council and the taxpayers that the taxpayer money is being used to increase the profits of profit, of private citizens. Unlike other municipal activities that are always nonprofit nature, this is for a profit Also, in the spirit of transparency, I refer to information, quote, as to ownership of redeveloper. If I'm correctly interpreting what's in the certificate attached to the agreement, Article VIII, Exhibit G, the names and addresses of entities owning under 10% should not be disclosed. So it's possible that any council member or member of the administration could be investors, and that information does not have to be disclosed. You're smiling. And if that is correct, such a situation could be similar to the Trank Organon issue, when Judge Stein was hired to investigate Mr. Trank's involvement in the ownership of the Organon property. I'm asking if any member of the council or the administration is a public, is an investor, would you be willing to make your involvement public? Getting to senior transportation, excuse me. The issue of transporting seniors to doctors and medical facilities out of the township is growing more urgent. More seniors are experiencing difficulty dealing with Access Link, the busing company, for various reasons, and more doctors are moving out of town. In fact, one of the doctors who just moved from his office on North Field Avenue, a quarter mile up the road, over the Livingston Line, heard about it from his patients, who are very concerned on how they will get there. And he's willing to help in any way to alleviate the situation. But that's not his problem, that's your problem. Now, it's not the doctor's problem, as I said, it's the township's problem. And I'm concerned, because it's my sense that Mr. Sayers is not acting quickly enough, which hasn't been his style with most senior issues. I don't know what his status is in dealing with the county director of senior services, who was very willing to work with us. He needs to communicate with her and come to a workable solution. Frankly, I don't have a high level of comfort that what's happening is going to happen soon enough, which is going to go into the winter months. Now, there's some seniors here tonight, one of them back there, having trouble with Access Link, not being able, telling him he has to use public transportation, not being able to get a ride on the bus. He needs to use a bus that will transport him from his location to his doctor and back home. I have a minute and 19 seconds. I resent Ms. Brill coming up here, being on the township payroll, and being a cheerleader and a sycophant for the council, the mayor, and the administration. She earns a salary, taxpayer dollars. I don't believe it's right for her to be here and boast and boost and cheer about this development. Another issue I have is, Mr. Kizer is not a parliamentarian. Mr. Kizer does not make decisions on parliamentary procedure. If you have a problem, there's a state parliamentarian that you can call right to, who will help you decide what's right and what you should be doing. If you do something wrong for a long time, you set a precedent, but you're not obeying the law. And I don't understand why everybody, especially these people on the administration, tell the president what to do. I stood here many times and said, Mr. Guarino, you're not looking at me.
I'm sorry.
That you run the meeting, no one else does. And don't forget that, and call a state parliamentarian. Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to say that I agree with most of the other speakers tonight about the changes that are being proposed to the redevelopment agreements. I'm very, very disappointed in the way in which this is being presented to the public. This project is the single most important and most discussed project in town. For years, it's languished and created a huge eye store in the heart of downtown, while Mayor Parisi has raised false hopes that construction would start shortly, and assured us that Prism had the financial wherewithal to move this project forward. It's now clear that hasn't been the case. But now that the administration wants the council to approve a revised redevelopment agreement and financial agreement, that adds a new partner, and certainly has significant financial implications, the administration doesn't feel necessary to make a presentation to the council and public on what has changed in these agreements. I understand from the last meeting, there are about a dozen changes to a 99-page document. And Mr. Sayers and Ms. Credidio, the township's redevelopment attorney, both acknowledged that these changes, unlike others made to the agreement about a year ago, that we weren't informed of, that these changes actually require legislative, legislative action by the council. That sounds to me as if there's likely significant changes that should be clearly explained. As another speaker said, what's the harm in making a simple, straightforward presentation of the changes? Obviously, not being open and transparent has caused many people a lot of concerns, and clearly by the number of people who are here tonight. There have been a lot of good questions raised by the public this evening. From personal experience, I know that questions raised at public comment are often not sufficiently answered by the administration or other experts. At the last meeting, Councilwoman McCartney advocated for residents' questions to be answered, and each one was. I sincerely hope that she, and the council president, and all the members of the council will push as strongly for answers to the questions raised tonight. I too urge the council to table Resolutions 201, 202, 203-15, as well as Ordinance 2458-15, until the administration presents a clear, informative presentation on the proposed changes to this project, and all the questions are answered. Separately, I'd like the administration to explain the thought process behind Resolution 217-15, which would investigate the possibility of creating yet another redevelopment zone, this time in the Prospect-Igorock Avenue commercial area. By definition, a redevelopment zone is for distressed, decrepit areas of town. One could argue that that area is one of the most well-developed, best-looking commercial zones in our town. On face value, this legislation doesn't seem to make sense. I look forward to answers to all of those questions. And again, I would, I would also advocate for everyone to speak into the microphones tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I now close public comment. Councilwoman McCartney, would you like to make any comments?
Well, I think, truthfully, I don't agree with many of the comments that were just made, because we have been looking at this languished building since, I don't know what year. Having sat on the planning board and approved the plan, some of the comments made about the project itself, there is no plan to the project itself. Althea was looking for business, we have 18,000 square feet of business in the project, and a residential component. I don't really know where to begin. I, council president, I would say that we have all of our legal people right here, that the question about clearly explained, the proposed changes, spelled it out for us, we read the documents. You know, I'm not ready to table these, but I think in all fairness, the questions that were raised, the very first one about the equity strategy could be answered. If construction is not complete, what happens then?
We can answer those questions now. Any with the legal questions, we have our legal teams here, so would any?
I know they're all taking notes, yes.
If, Ms. Credidio, would you like to make any comments about some of the legal issues and questions that were proposed tonight?
Before you speak, just to answer Rosary Morelli's question, I do not have any financial investment in this project, except for a lot of time, and many hours, and many years.
Ms.
That was really ugly.
Professionally, we're all professional people here. Let's act professionally. No side comments to the council or anybody speaking. Please. I'm asking everyone to act professionally. Act professionally and courteously. Let's show the world that West Orange is a courteous people. Ms. Credidio.
Good evening, Council President Guarino, Mayor Parisi, members of the governing body. My name is Jennifer Credidio, a partner with the firm of McManam &amp; Scotland Embauement, Special Redevelopment Council with the township. Couple of the questions that I jotted down while speakers were participating, what occurs if there is a default during construction? There is a possibility for the municipality to declare an event of default if construction is halted mid-construction, and a force majeure event, essentially an act of God, is not the cause for that pause in construction. The events of default are substantially similar to the documents that we have previously executed in the redevelopment agreements that we have at, right now with Prism, and the modification agreement with Prism with respect to Phase 1. It would require a notice, an opportunity to cure the default, and then the municipality has certain remedies, including, you know, legal actions for specific performance, et With respect to economic and feasibility, this actually was in the 2006 agreement in Article 5, it's also in the modification agreement, also in Article 5, and that concept continues in the document that you have before you tonight for consideration with DGP urban renewal. The concept of economic and feasibility, meaning not that this redeveloper is unable to undertake a project, but that no redeveloper, no similarly situated redeveloper is able to undertake the project, essentially when you have a market collapse, or, you know, private lending is not available at commercially reasonable terms, et cetera. And that's explained at greater length in the agreements. With respect to the use of the apartments as affordable units, the, we can have the financial advisor speak to some of the, the economics of the project, but the, the proforma is the economic runs, and the, the project structure that we have is not, does not lend itself to affordable housing. The costs of adaptive reuse at this site are very high, and they are expecting and forecasting significant rents in order to offset the adaptive reuse of, you know, Mr. Edison's battery factory. I believe that that may have been, all of the questions I had, some of them occurred more than once. With respect to the disclosure, just for the record, 14.2 of the agreement provides that no township official or employee shall have any interest, direct or indirect, in the project or the agreement, for what it's worth. If there are any particular questions that the council would like me to address in addition to those, I'd be happy to do so.
Any questions for legal? No. Any financial?
Mike.
No financial, yes, councilman.
I have a question, Ms. Credidio. Thank you for talking about the economic and feasibility issue. My question relates to an event of default. I read a line that said that during the negotiation period, the township shall not declare an event of default for non-construction. As you know, that's the most important point in this agreement, that I'm, I'm, that I'm a big, I've been a big supporter of. I remember the first time this issue came around, later on I realized that we should have put a timeline in there, and that, and I have, to anyone that listens, I've told them that, you know, I feel guilty for not advocating for that. The fact that there was no timeline, there was no point in there that said, hey, you know, the construction needs to begin by this date. This remedies that, and I appreciate that. However, and I understand the point about the construction needs to begin by the end of September.
Correct.
And, and if it doesn't, the township has a right to declare the project, or has the right to declare an event of default. However, I did read that line that says that during the negotiation period, can you explain what that, what that terminology means, that during the negotiation period, negotiation period, if there's no construction, that we cannot declare an event of default?
Surely. And I should have clarified, there are two redevelopment agreements before you this evening. There is the redevelopment agreement that's proposed for entry with respect to the Phase 1 project, which is the Edison battery site proper with DGP urban renewal, whereas, you know, we've been colloquially referring to it as, you know, the Dune Agreement. You are also being asked to consider a short-form amendment to the 2006 redevelopment agreement with Prism Green Associates 4 LLC, with respect to the other phases of the downtown redevelopment, Phases 2, 3, 4. That agreement is necessary in part because the 2006 agreement designates Prism Green as the developer of the Phase 1 site, and since those redevelopment rights will now be transferred to the DGP entity, we can't have, you know, two agreements that provide redevelopment rights in the same property to different people. So that's the first thing that that agreement, the Prism agreement, if you'd like to call it, is going to do. Second thing that it does is provides that the township and Prism will enter into renegotiations with respect to the latter phases of the project, Phases 2, 3, and 4. During that negotiation period, which the document states will be approximately six months from the execution of the documents, we agree that we will not default Prism for not constructing Phases 2, 3, and 4, which we are then in the process of negotiating. It has nothing to do with the Phase 1 Edison battery project, and in fact, because it's going to be undertaken by a separate redeveloper, there are actually very clear statements separating those two, those two items.
Thank you, council president. You're very welcome. I have, like I said, I have the question, the fact of the matter is that, well, people keep coming up with Prism tonight, that's all I've been hearing is Prism, we're forgetting about Dune Partners. Okay, Dune Partners are the senior partners of this. We've always been talking to people in the council who've said, we need a new developer. Well, guess what? You have a new developer. You have a developer who's giving cash, fresh cash into a project they deem is a viable project. Okay? So I don't know why I keep people saying Prism, we can't trust them. Are you saying we can't trust Dune? Dune is not Prism. Dune is Dune. They're coming in, they saw a project they feel is viable, they've been successful, and I think that's what it has to be looked at. On the issue of the tax issue, the township of West Orange didn't lose any money. Okay? The township of West Orange, okay, they were linked. I don't agree with people being delinquent in their taxes. I can't be delinquent in my taxes. Okay? But they paid their taxes. They paid their, they paid their penalties. Thank you, sorry. They paid their penalties. Okay? So the township didn't lose any money, the township made money by them paying their penalties. I don't agree with people being delinquent in their taxes, but they paid. The, the other issue is, and I said it at last meeting, when we had everybody here, we could have asked questions too, that how much does it cost the township of West Orange? How much did we take out of pocket for this project? Nothing. The developer has spent almost $2 million to defend itself and do all this stuff, money they could have put into that project, and maybe paid their taxes too, at the same time. So that's what I'm trying to say, what's coming out tonight, that everybody keeps mentioning Prism. It's not Prism, it's Dune Partners. Okay? So that's why, and am I right, Ms. Credidio? It's that they are the senior part, the developer.
That's correct.
Okay. And Prism has a small part of it. Okay?
Yes, Prism is the administrative member.
Administrative, right. So basically, they're the So basically, they're the GCP. And can I say that, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Are they the general contractor, could we say, or?
I wouldn't necessarily say that they're the general contractor, but they will assist the joint venture in making sure that the project is constructed, drawing on their, you know, their institutional memory of the site and the experience that they've had there over the last several years.
Okay. And am I right, too? When people talk about marketing and the whole thing, no bank is going to give them money unless they have a viable, they're going to look at it and look at a marketing statement. So no bank will give them any money unless they see a viable marketing. So that's the other issue. Has there been another marketing, you know, proposal done? Are they in the process of doing it, or have the banks asked for it? I mean, who can I ask that question to?
Well, I mean, I can't speak to whether a new marketing study has been done, and I'm not sure, and perhaps Mr. Hanley could speak more, to whether one would, a formal study would be required by institutional lender, obviously an institutional lender that invests in real estate projects, has, you know, firsthand knowledge of conditions in the market, and whether information submitted to it, you know, they have their own underwriting criteria and ability to evaluate risk and likelihood of sale.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Credito. I have a question, I don't know if the administration or to the finance. What are the bonds? Somebody came up here today and said they're general obligation bonds. What are they? So we can answer that question.
Perhaps, perhaps I can answer that as well. I mean, the bonds that are currently the subject of pending litigation are redevelopment bonds, which happen to be general obligation bonds. The two things are not inconsistent. There is not a requirement to have a vote on the bonds, as was stated earlier, I should have addressed that. So the question of when are you scheduling one is, you know, the litigation is still ongoing with respect to the authorization of those bonds, but there are no plans and no need to schedule a vote on those bonds at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. And my last part is to answer residents' questions. I don't owe anyone an apology for what happened to the last meeting. I put in perspective that a member of this council, no matter who they are, should not talk to a representative of the township or one of our, you know, consulting people in that type of, manner of accusatory manner. I don't allow that. I don't allow the public to do it, I don't allow myself to do it. I don't owe anyone an apology because I didn't think I was being out of line, preventing, you know, to being critical and being accusatory in that manner. So, no. And to Ms. Morelli's thing, I don't have any ownership in the project. Couldn't afford it. So I'm done. Councilwoman Spango.
I just have a little bit to add. First, to Ms. Morelli, I do not, for the record, have any ownership in this development at all. And I would just like, I mean, I hear everyone's concerns as I have, sitting up here for as long as I have. But what I'd like to say is, I've supported this project from its inception, long before I was elected part of this legislative body. I believed and I support it in this project under Mayor McKean's administration, and I continue to believe and support this project under Mayor Parisi's administration. I believe this redevelopment will enhance the Main Street corridor, benefit all of the downtown businesses, which will eventually benefit all of West Orange. I'm looking forward to seeing a shovel being put to the ground and get this project going.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman Kukrovjak.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to follow up on some of the things that Ms. Credito had said, just for clarification's sake, and then I wanted to make sure that all of the questions that were asked by the residents speaking at public comment are answered as well as they can be. You had mentioned that in reaction to one of the comments about economic feasibility, and not to put words in your mouth, but my interpretation of what you said was that that was a problem of the economic downturn that made lending unavailable to them. Just to point out perhaps the obvious, Mr. Hanley at the last meeting said that Prism had a capital problem. And I think it's pretty clear at this point that the problem was not a general economic problem, it was a problem faced by Prism that they could not pull together the money to make this project move. And I'll just, for the sake of comparison, up until Dune came in, there was no loan, there was no financing for Prism. As soon as Dune comes in, they're going to put up money and are certifying, essentially certifying, that they can have, they can borrow not just $50 million, but $70 million. So the point was that the economic feasibility clause may address a general economic downturn. That was not what the problem was here. Did you disagree with anything I said?
My understanding of Mr. Malanga's question was whether the concept of economic and feasibility in the documents was a new one, and that was what I was addressing and saying, that it was in the 2006 documents. Mr. Hanley can speak more directly to the economic conditions, both generally and as they have pertained to Prism to this point. And, you know, I'm not necessarily competent to do that. That's why we have it.
Mr. Hanley, if you'd like to add anything, fine. If not, you don't, you don't have to. Okay. There was a mention of affordable housing, and you said that the project, Phase One, doesn't lend itself to providing affordable housing. And so what's going to be happening is that we're pushing back that obligation to the later phases. In answer to, I believe, a question, and I don't remember who raised it, what happens to the obligation? The obligation under existing law, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the townships. The town has to provide the affordable housing. In virtually all cases, the way the municipality deals with it is that it passes on the responsibility for paying for affordable housing to essentially the projects that build housing and build commercial activity that prompt the additional need for housing. In this case, it's being pushed to the back of the latter, the latter three phases, and as, if I remember correctly, the new proposed redeveloper is going to make a payment in contribution to the affordable housing requirement. Is that correct?
You've asked a couple of questions there, councilman. To begin with, the 71 units that were slated for this area in the 2006 agreement are, under the documents that you have before you tonight, intended and expected to be addressed in Phases Two, Three, and Four. This is consistent with the modification agreement that was previously undertaken with respect to Phase One. So when we considered those documents in 2012, the modification agreement provided that those 71 units would be addressed in later phases, and the documents you have before you tonight are consistent with that. The township has an obligation to make a reasonable opportunity for affordable housing available in its borders. And I cannot speak to the general efforts that you undertake in that regard. I know that you have an affordable housing consultant who's excellent and that you have made consistently over time efforts to make affordable housing available to your citizens and to not engage in exclusionary zoning or any of the practices of which so many, by which so many are hurt. With respect to the payment to be made by Dune with respect to affordable housing, at the time of the execution of the 2006 agreement and also the later modification agreement, at the time of the 2006 agreement, there was not yet the 2008 statute that implemented the statewide non-residential development fee. There is a small retail component in the Phase One project. When the later agreements were considered, the non-residential development fee had been under moratorium, as it was almost from the day that it was enacted. It is currently not under moratorium to the extent that there is an affordable housing payment that must be made at the time of the retail component's construction. And it's not, you know, repealed or under moratorium at that time. Dune will, of course, abide, you know, state statute and make that payment if required. So that deals specifically with the retail portion.
What approximately would be the payment that the new redeveloper would make?
If I remember correctly, the statute calls for a 2.5% of assessed value on the non-residential piece, but there are certain credits and offsets, including for previous non-residential development on the site. So I don't have a hard number.
Okay. Mr. Hanley, do you have a hard number on that?
Yeah.
Okay. There was some question about the marketing study. Just for those who don't really know what's going on, the Prism, back in, I guess, prior to 2012, hired a company to actually do a market study to determine what the prices and rents that the project could make. And that gave some substance to projections of what the revenue might be in the project. And the question was raised again tonight, and I don't think it was answered correctly. Is, is the new proposed developer, has it, or has the old developer done a marketing study similar to the one that was done a few years ago?
I'm not aware of a marketing study having been done as it relates to this at this time, but I can tell you, the rents that are projected on a square foot basis are in, you know, they are similar to the rents that are being charged in similar properties in the area. Prism is also leasing units at Parkway Loft, which would be a good comp for this. So I would say that their knowledge of the market comports with my knowledge of the market, and Dune and Greenfield, who are investing additional equity into this project, obviously believe that the projections are correct. So I don't think it would be necessary to get, call a banker to update their study for any of the participants in the transaction. I think the equity contribution is sufficient evidence of their point of view on the market.
And when you say obviously, I just, I just kind of think back to, obviously to Prism, a few years ago, they thought that they could get the rents, and we see where that went. So the reason I'm asking is because, as I mentioned earlier, this provides some additional substance to the whole projections of revenue and cash flow. Do you see what I'm saying? They did a marketing study a few years ago, we thought it was going to work, and it obviously wasn't something that worked. What's different now?
Well, I think the difference is the capital infusion. I mean, certainly, those rents were achievable, the projected rents were achievable. It was getting the project financed, and certainly having a large portion of the money that was needed, which was connected to the bonds, not available, obviously didn't allow Prism to move forward with the project. After this time has gone by, it became clear that more equity was needed, and Prism chose, for financial reasons or, you know, reasons of their own, not to be the investor here that puts in the additional equity. Dune and Greenfield are the investors that are going to do that. And I believe that the assumptions in the pro forma comport with what goes on in the marketplace today, and I believe with the equity they're putting in, they can get a loan of the size that would be necessary to complete the project.
So you think the big difference is not the rents that can be achieved from the planned project, it's the additional equity or capital that was being, is being proposed to be put into the project now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to also follow up on something you said, you, I'm sorry, with Ms. Credito, about the role of Prism in the Phase One project, the proposed Phase One project. I want to try to get as full an understanding as I can about the role, because my understanding was that basically Prism was going to do the exact same thing in this, in Phase One project that they were planning to do with their own, only this time they were going to be using other people's money, and they were going to have next to no equity exposure to make a profit as they did in the previous, the previous proposal. So I'm just trying to get an idea, what exactly is Prism's role in the new proposed Phase One?
As set forth in the certification that's attached to the application and the draft documents, there's a joint venture that's been formed that wholly owns DGP Urban Renewal. Prism is the administrative member. They do not have an ownership interest. They have arranged where the site, the existing Edison Battery Building, and their contributions into that building are coming into the partnership, and Mr. Hanley can speak more to that. And in addition to their, their ongoing contributions to this time, they are going to be participating with Dune, assisting them in the redevelopment of the project using their firsthand knowledge of the site and years of time at this site.
So is your understanding different from what my understanding is? That they are not going to be taking the lead on the actual construction project? As members of the?
I think as the administrative member, that they will be taking the laboring, or if you will, on getting the project moving along, but the persons that have control over the decisions of the entity are the Dune and Greenfield entities. So they will be taking direction from the new developer.
Okay. And how is that different from the previous incarnation of this?
The GP 177 Urban Renewal was wholly owned by the Prism Green entity.
No, I understand that. I'm asking about the role of Prism. Everybody's point being, there was coming up and complaining about Prism was that their performance leading up to this point for the last nine years. And it is correct that there are new equity partners, and there's new equity coming into it, the new entity. But Prism is still a part of the new entity, and the criticism of Prism's past performance and how it may reflect on their potential for future performance is the point that people are making. So I'm just trying to find out if they are indeed going to have a significant role in the Phase One project. And I'm not hearing that they're going to be managing the construction. I thought that that's what they were going to do. Are you saying that somebody else, other than Prism employees, are going to be managing the construction?
I don't know offhand, councilman, who the construction manager would be, but they obviously have a series of professionals, engineers, et cetera.
Excuse me, Credito, can I explain? Can I have one of the partners of either Dune or Prism come forward and explain how the project's going to go forward? Let's not just go back and forth, so let's get an answer right now.
Ed Cohen, Prism Capital Partners, residing in Fort Lee, New Jersey. A number of misstatements have been made by the public tonight, tremendous misstatements. To say that Prism has no equity interest in this complex, pardon my French, is bullshit. We have not only sweat equity, but capital equity.
I was going to say something. Let me run my meeting.
But capital. I will tone it down. But I've been sitting here all night, listening to things about our company which are utterly false. We will be the general contractor on constructing this project. Does that answer your question, councilman?
And that's what I've asked, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody from Dune Partners would like to make a comment, why your questions, your company's being reviewed? You don't have to. I mean, just maybe just to let the general public feel exactly where this project is going.
Just two quick questions, Council President. If the councilman is done with his remarks, or I can have the floor?
If the councilman?
What I wanted to do was go through the comments that were being made by the public that were asking questions that I think it might be appropriate for our redevelopment advisors to, to answer, and then we can, we can move on. I just, there's still three, I've got three pages of notes of questions that were asked that I don't believe have been addressed yet. So if I, if with your leave, Council President, I'd like to continue the questioning. Thank you. There was a question about, I'm sorry, excuse me. There was a question by one of the residents about the increased traffic that will be brought down to Main Street with the new project. And the question was, was there a feasibility study done? And there was a traffic feasibility study done before the planning board, and the, even though we're going to be putting a huge parking garage down there, there's no indication that there's, in the experts' estimates, that there's going to be any traffic problem, any additional traffic problem down there. I just want to go back through. There was a question about, are these general obligation bonds that are being discussed as part of the financing? And I wasn't sure if it was clear that the documents do say it's general obligation financing.
That's correct.
Okay. There is also some discussion from our previous council meeting, that there are alternatives to the general obligation financing. I don't know whether now is a good time to talk about that. It's, this is in case the situation arises that the town cannot issue the $6.3 million in general obligation bonds, what will be done differently? And I thought it might be a good time to just talk about that.
Sure.
I have an idea before you go on. I think maybe this is a time to have a presentation by the people that are here, because answering these questions, it's going around and around, I think maybe now, we have the people here, let's have them make a presentation to the public. Let's ask, let them make the presentation on how this is going to move forward, the financing, all the questions, and everybody keep, you know, calm head. But I think that's the way we need to do, because asking it this way isn't getting us anywhere, or getting the public any answers. So I'd like to propose that I think that the members of the partnership, and our financial and our legal, need to make a presentation. One was made at the last meeting, so now I think we need to make it now. That's what I'd like to do right now. I think it'd be more productive. My council, I mean, the administration? I mean, Mr. Councilman Cirillo?
Never mind, Council President.
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that the partners were prepared to make a presentation.
Right, if they are prepared to make a statement. Absolutely. I mean, if they're prepared.
Don't want to put anyone on the spot.
Are the partners prepared to make a statement, or to make a presentation?
After hearing the questions.
Thank you, sir. Just give us your name.
Sure. Good evening, Council President, Council Members, Mr. Mayor, Administration, members of the public. My name is James McCann. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City, and I represent Dune Real Estate Partners. I actually don't have a presentation prepared, but I'd be happy to answer questions that have been raised by members of the public, and, and any questions from the council about Dune's involvement in this project. They're, they're excited to be involved in the project. You know, the plan going forward is if the council will approve the ordinance that's before tonight, and the two resolutions, then the new redevelopment entity will go out and complete its process of obtaining financing for the project, which includes construction financing. There was a question asked by members of the public as to what Dune's equity involvement is in the project, and Mr. Hanley stated it at the last meeting. Still the same number, $23.5 million. That's the number in the pro forma. There's some equity being contributed by the other member, Greenfield, which is approximately $11 million, consistent with the pro forma. It's estimated that the construction loan that the new redeveloper will receive will be approximately $70 million. Could be a little more, could be a little less. There are ongoing negotiations with a construction lender that Dune has an ongoing relationship Quite frankly, part of what needs to happen for the financing to fall in place is that this legislation needs to be approved by this council, because as of right now, this entity doesn't have the right to develop the property. So until that happens, you can't really complete the financing process, just that's just a cold, hard fact of developing a real estate project like this. There's a lot of moving parts that all need to fall into place at the same time. So the strategy going forward is to complete the financing, build the project, market the project, lease the project up, and then stabilize it. I know there was a, a member of the public that asked about an exit strategy. There really isn't an exit strategy. There's a lot to do to get the project built before you can even worry about that. The project, the, the strategy is to get the project built and stabilize it, so that it becomes an asset to, a viable asset to both the partnership, and to the community, and, and the municipality.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, then, Council?
Sure.
I just want to say, Council President, I appreciate that response. I know Mary Clemmison, that was the gist of her, her question, so.
Wanted to get your questions answered. Any, Councilman, would you like to ask the legal?
Sure. I would like to follow up on that, because Ms. Clemmison asked, I believe, two questions. She asked, what is the equity strategy, and what is the exit strategy? Someone of Dune's sophistication, and I think this is what Ms. Clemmison was alluding to, always, always has an exit strategy. Do they want to be short term? Do they want to be long term? Do they want to be midterm? What do they want to do? Are you saying that Dune does not have an exit strategy?
Yeah.
Or not have an exit strategy that you're aware of?
I'm saying that there's no determination as to what they're, what an exit strategy is at the present time. The, the strategy is to get the project built and stabilized.
Okay. You, you mentioned the $70 million construction financing. The proposal is to get construction started by September 30th, which is a pretty quick time period. What, what indications, what documentations, what representations do you have that you will be able to obtain the $70 million in construction financing on a rather rapid basis?
I'm, I'm not making any representations, and I don't have any documentation with me tonight. It's an ongoing process obtaining financing for a project like this. As I said, there's ongoing discussions with a lender or lenders who, who the new redeveloper has relationships with, and it is anticipated that those relationships will bring forth construction financing within the time required.
Is there a term sheet that exists? Is there any memorandum of understanding that exists?
No term sheet has been finalized as of the present date.
Memorandum of understanding? Any sort of legal documents that have passed between the two parties?
Nothing's been finalized as of the present date.
This, the reason I'm asking is, as you can appreciate, and, is that the problem has been for several years, that we've been told that this project was about to move forward, and it never materializes. And it seemed to be the construction loan was the problem. So I'm trying to find out what makes the difference now than, as compared to what's been going on the last five years or so.
I can't say what's been going on for the past five years or so, but I can tell you that there's, there's a new redevelopment entity that's been formed, there's some new equity money that's being contributed to the project, and there's a new partner that has relationships with lenders that believes that it can get the financing that I made reference to. It is a complicated process getting financing for a project like this, and, you know, things have to fall into place for that to happen.
Can you, are you familiar enough with your client to be able to estimate how much construction financing they've been able to obtain, say, in the last five years?
No, sir.
Okay. I, I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Thank you. Councilman Cirillo, thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but-
That's okay.
Want to get questions?
Happy to answer the questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cirillo?
My question was answered, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this juncture, I'd like, I'd like to make a change. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, there were two other questions that were raised, one by Paula Dixon Taylor, about the garbage on Wachung. I know that we do have a representative, and, and I know that there have been posts on Facebook about trash being left in the street. No, I, maybe we do need to speak. And I have cleaned up glass in my own street. I didn't post it on Facebook, but, you know.
We're on it.
We're on it. Okay. And the other one is about the basketball courts at the substation. I know it's not a trophy, you know, though the station is dedicated to Timmy Groves, but.
Look, Ms. Taylor's right, there's not a lot of basketball courts in the area. It's not for lack of caring, it's land, space. We don't have a ton of space in the older, more densely populated section of town. Ms. Taylor referenced the basketball courts at Colgate. That was unfortunate, that was my neighborhood park, but those were taken in '92, so it's not recent that those courts were removed as the pool was expanded. We do, and have, created the basketball court through the substation through a grant, partial grant funding, and it is used. It's used in conjunction with programs at the substation. Now, whether or not the community services unit of the police department wants to expand those programs, that's something that always can be discussed, but it's used, it's just, it's not just open where anyone can go at any time. It's, it's used under the supervision of the community services unit. So it's not fair to say it's not used, it's not open just generally to anybody, but it is used in conjunction with programs sponsored by the members of the community services unit. We did just, and again, it's up the hill, I understand there's always a proximity issue and people's ability to get around, but with the support of council, as this past year's capital budget, we just completely renovated the basketball court at Degnan, which is now a beautifully resurfaced, new backwards court. So it's not, again, for lack of interest in athletics, I think this township has demonstrated a huge support of athletics for the last 15, 20 years. In that neighborhood, the issue is space, and there's just not a lot of space. So we try to maximize our use of space. As you recall, when tennis wasn't quite as popular in Colgate Park, we modified that space to be the Futsal Court, for soccer. So we try to take advantage of the space we have and maximize it, but more than anything, in adding to our facilities, it's simply not for lack of caring, it's for lack of adequate space.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else, Councilman?
Mayor, the Eagle Rock, the Eagle Rock Corner, so we, that was another one that was raised. We have Resolution 217, we're looking at a planner to look at the Eagle Rock Corner.
We could, we can certainly answer questions that the council may have when the resolution comes up, but the reason the administration is asking the council to kind of look at this is because there's a lot of parcels there, that though the speaker did mention, they are built out, but some of them are significantly vacant. Some of them, large property owners are looking to sell. We just saw the diner, which is part of the zone that's going to be created by this, has sold. So there's a lot of things happening there. Not only is an area redevelopment necessarily for areas that are-
Depressed.
Depressed, but also looking to-
Maximize.
Maximize their use, reinvigorate themselves a little bit, revitalize themselves. So we have a lot of property owners there who are looking to maybe invest in their properties. We have other property owners who are looking maybe to sell. So the thought was that if we create a process, and Councilwoman, you've been on the planning board forever, you know that it's good to have town say in some of these things that happened. People have a right to sell their properties, despite everyone's frustration. You don't have the right to take someone else's right away from them just because you don't like it. So a lot of people were unhappy that Pal sold, but that's their right. So if we have a lot of other properties that are maybe looking to invest, or maybe even someone looking to sell, we thought it was good to create a zone, have some input in the planning phase of that, and to at least have a say at the table in what some property owners might want to do with their property owners. We're hoping the council approves that, and we can study that collectively as a community, in conjunction with the planning board, and in conjunction with the property owners.
I'm thinking that would encompass, Ospac is right, they're also, open space has five acres there, too. There still is not a path clear around Crystal Lake, so there is some work that could be done up there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council President, if I, I apologize, I may not have been clear when I said I didn't have any more questions for Mr. McCann. I didn't mean that I was, wanted to relinquish the floor. So I wonder if I could go back to-
I thought you were done, Councilman, and then we went to Councilman Cirillo, but you should have, you know, before, but.
I chimed in, okay. Go, finish, let's finish.
Thank you. There were a couple of questions. Mr. Dreyer asked if there are any circumst, I think he asked all of the council members, is there any circumstance where you would declare default if there's a failure to comply with the, with the redevelopment agreement documents? And I certainly would be willing to do that. Ms. Lencheck asked, I believe, five questions, that's why she handed us this, these written questions, and wanted a response. The first question was, and I think she wanted a response from all the council members, will you delay the vote on this ordinance and resolutions until the presentation is made to the citizens and to you, the council members? I appreciate Mr. McCann coming up at the request of a presentation. I don't consider that a presentation, and I'm, I'm not sure that the people who raised the issue in public comment considered it a presentation. But I would certainly be willing to delay this until we can get a presentation and get all of the residents' questions answered. The second question, what is the harm in providing and sharing as much information about the project as possible? I, I think that's a rhetorical question, because I don't see any harm in doing that. The third question, regarding construction, if the developer begins the project and completes only a percentage of it, and then is unable to complete the entire project, what happens? And I think Ms. Credidio brought that up. There's a, if I recall correctly, the documents say, a undisclosed three-month delay in, three-month absence of progress on the construction is enough to trigger a default. Otherwise, it would, there would be some renegotiating between the two parties. Number four, given the redevelopers' long history of failure to comply with the terms of the contract by frequent property, tax delinquencies, failure to notify the town of the foreclosure proceedings on the 55 Lakeside Avenue property, and failure to complete this project in nearly nine years, what makes you think that the redeveloper can be trusted to comply in the future? I think it's a, a good question to ask, and I'm not sure we can answer it definitively, but I certainly have concerns that the Prism, given their performance over the last several years, and then its key role going forward, does have, does bring some concerns to my mind. Number five, if the redeveloper defaults on any aspect of the agreement, will you commit to taking steps to enforce the terms of the agreement by voting to declare an event of default? I certainly would be willing to do that. Ms. Morelli asked if any of the council members had an investment. I do not have an investment in, in the project. Mr. Meyerwitz asked if it is possible, in the proposed building renovation, if it's possible that a one-bedroom unit can be split into a two-bedroom unit to get more people in. I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure if redevelopment advisors know that either, but I would like to throw that out. Is that prohibited, or do you know, have any knowledge about that?
I think that would be generally handled by your zoning officer and your code enforcement. You know, they have preliminary and final site plan approval for, you know, a particular mix of units. They're going to construct a particular project, and obviously, anywhere in town, if you had a one-bedroom that was being subdivided, that's going to be handled by your generally applicable ordinances.
Thank you.
Additionally, Council President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Township has a certificate of habitability ordinance requiring all landlords, upon a vacancy of a rental unit, to get it re-inspected. And the purpose that this township created that ordinance several years ago was to help to prevent that from happening, because regardless of where a home is, whether it's an apartment or a large house, people, it's hard to build a wall and bring in renters. So we've seen that, and the township has actively tried to dissuade people from doing that, but also, more importantly, have created the vehicle for gaining access to vacant apartments in hopes of preventing that. But to answer the question candidly, there's nothing preventing someone from doing that. The hope is that we catch them as they are violation of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think there was one more question that Mr. Malanga raised, was, I think it was Mr. Malanga, that raised about the issue of if the, if the project can be revised in the face of potential problems of success, and whether it can become a low-income housing, if it's, if it's possible that it become a low-income- if it's possible that it become a low-income housing project. I'm sorry, I guess it was Ms. Tweeten asked that question. I don't know the answer to that, I know that there's some discussion in the documents about discussions among the parties to negotiate down the road, but perhaps you could, Ms. Credidio, if you know.
There's no requirement for a minimum rent to be charged, but you know, there's nothing affirmatively prohibiting the use of this or any other structure for affordable housing. I certainly wouldn't advise you to do that in general. But you know, there's no minimum rent to be charged, although there are minimum payments that are required to be made by the project regardless of the rents that are charged under the financial agreement. And that's consistent with the previous document and assigned, proposed to be assigned over to the new one today.
I know there's a lot of widespread fear that this could happen. My personal opinion is that if this is built to the standards of a luxury building, it's unlikely that the market will allow that building to go from a luxury building to being housing, low-income housing, simply because at some point, the market, the real estate market will clear that, and somebody will either come in at a lower price point. I don't, I don't think it's likely, but the question seems to be, is it possible? And the question is not so much, if I understood your response, not so much as an alternative to what's being done now, as a totally different project. The question seems to be, if it's built as a luxury rental property, but it is not successful as a luxury rental property, is it possible that eventually that could be brought down to some sort of low-income housing?
Yeah, as I said, the, you know, the project will bear whatever the market rents that the project will bear.
Councilman Cirillo?
Council President, there's many references to low-income housing, and I want to know what that means. How do we define low-income housing? You keep referencing low-income housing, what does that mean?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to advocate to get answers to the questions that the residents are asking, so I don't know low-income housing, what the definition of it. I think you probably have a much better idea of what that term means, just because of your professional.
Yeah, the word just keeps being thrown around, it has so many definitions, but I really don't understand in what concept we define low-income housing in comparison to luxury housing. It's just, we're just going around in circles, we really don't know what we're talking about. It's a very specialized field, and it's just, it absolutely doesn't make sense to start talking about this, it's just a totally different world. I'm sorry, but I needed to say that.
Okay.
Councilman?
Just a couple more things. I believe that Ms. Taylor's questions were addressed by the administration. If they aren't, you know, please let us know about the two issues that you raised today. And I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Martin for coming, I know she's a new face in town, so I appreciate you coming and speaking up today. And that's all I have from public comment, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. At this point in time, I'd like to adjust the agenda, and with my council colleagues' permission, or as I say, I would like to move to ordinance twenty-four fifty-eight dash fifteen, and move it up as the next part of our business. Madam Clerk? Oh wait, I gotta do my, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Right. Now, we're moving this ordinance now, and this is where public comment can be made, all right? But before proceeding with this ordinance on second and final reading, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will raise his or her hand and give their name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of raising as nearly as I can determine. Each person will have five minutes to speak, which will be strictly adhered to. Comments must be confirmed solely to specific ordinance being heard. That means we're only speaking to ordinance twenty-four fifty-eight dash fifteen. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed?
An ordinance, twenty-four fifty-eight dash fifteen, an ordinance of the township of West Orange and the county of Essex, New Jersey, authorizing the amendment, assignment, and assumption of a financial agreement with respect to certain property commonly known as the Edison Battery Factory. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kupoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. We are now opening the floor to the general public. Is anybody wishing to be heard on ordinance twenty-four fifty-eight dash fifteen? Yes, Mr. Malanga?
It's actually a question rather than a statement. Can any member of the council please tell the public the amount of the tax abatement for this project?
Administration, answer that question? Mr. Gross?
Mike?
Mr. Hanley, I'm sorry.
The projection at stabilization, initial stabilization would be about one-point-one million dollars in pilot payment related to the project.
Is that per year?
Yeah.
That's per year?
Yeah, and it.
For how many years?
For thirty years.
And Mike, it's also tiered?
Well, it, the basis of calculation for the pilot is that it's a percentage of gross revenue.
Can we explain stabilization?
Yes.
Stabil, yeah, stabilization is when the building is basically fully leased.
Ninety-five or one-hundred?
Ninety-five.
Thank you. You're welcome, sir. And when is that projected to be?
Twenty-nineteen.
So what you're saying in the year twenty-nineteen, the township can expect a pilot payment of one-point-one million dollars?
Yes, based on the projected rents.
And that's on, and that's on top of the land taxes that will be paid?
Well, it's cumulative, it includes the land tax.
It includes the land tax? It's not discounted for the land tax?
No, the land tax is credited against the payment.
And that one-point-one million, that is over thirty years, and, correct? That's just annual?
It increases to the extent rents increase, so I mean, it will.
It's cumulative, right?
Assuming increases in rents over time.
But there is a minimum, there is a minimum annual payment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Hopefully, we won't have to get to that, but I'm just trying to make it clear that this will be each year over thirty years, and the expectation is that that will rise at some point very soon to hit a peak, and then move up just basically as the market rents move up?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Now, is it my question?
Come, Mr. Malanga, come back up, thank you, sir. You used part of your five minutes, but that's.
My question was, what is the amount of the abatement, not the amount of the payment in lieu of taxes? So the, if the project is worth one-hundred million dollars, and our tax rate is three percent, then the taxes on the property should be three million dollars per year. So the payment in lieu of taxes is only one million dollars. So the amount of the abatement is actually two million dollars per year, is that correct? Is that fair to say? So it's two million dollars over thirty years, each year?
It's a little bit circular, because the, as you increase the total payment, you decrease the value of the property. So it's not as simple as saying, you know, the property's worth a hundred million, and you subtract two, because that two million would be reduced from the net operating income, which helps determine the value of the property. But the, the property would not be built but for this pilot being in effect, so I don't, I don't think it's, there is a calculation that answers that question exactly.
So you've not done the calculation as to the amount of the abatement from market taxation for this project, is that fair to say?
No, I think the question is not answerable the way you're, you would like to have it answered.
I'm just not understanding the amount of the bait, of the abatement as a deviation from market taxation.
Well, market taxation is in part determines the value of a property, right? So value of income-producing properties is determined by the income that they produce. So if you were to raise it to three million dollars, because as it stands as a property with a pilot, it would be worth a hundred million, it would no longer be worth a hundred million dollars. You would be reducing it by fifteen or twenty million dollars, because you've reduced that net operating income.
This project has positive cash flow, is that right?
Yes, this project has positive cash flow.
All right, so based on the positive cash flow, what is the value of this building once it's constructed?
Well, again, I think the, at conventional taxes, it would have a much lower value, and in fact, wouldn't be constructed, that's why we're all here.
So were it not for the tax abatement, this project would not be financially viable, is that right?
The tax abatement is crucial to this project being constructed, yes.
I have no other questions, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Ms. Morelli? Mrs. Morelli?
Yeah, I see what's going on here, something that reinforces the fact that we really need, call it a dog and pony show, I really don't believe all of you understand what's going on, we don't. Several comments just confuse me. Low-income housing? Mr. Cirillo, don't you work in low-income housing, or affordable housing?
Nobody knows what they're talking about.
Nobody knows? Well, that's why, we need more, we need a complete presentation. You're trying to push this through, I would recommend you table this, there are too many questions, seniors are asking me questions day after day, I tell them to call the mayor's office. Why aren't we having meetings in the schools the way we did the first time? We don't understand what's going on, it's very simple. You made a statement, Mr. Garino, that we are not losing any money. How long have the businesses that were there before they started, whatever they did, out of there? We've lost those ratables, we've lost that money, so you don't have to spend it, if you're not getting it, you're losing it. So it's been a loss to the township, and it's always a burden on the taxpayer. We need an explanation. I heard something real funny, somebody said to me, do you think those people up there think that Goldman Sachs is a shop in Short Hills Mall? Read the whole Don Doom biography, or whatever it is, they're all Goldman Sachs people, and remember, they gave us Governor Corzine. I think you need to have a presentation so that the people in this township for this big adventure know what's going on, and it has to be in layman's language. After all, we're the ones who will be paying for it. Thank you.
Mr. Meyerowitz?
Thank you very much. With all this new partnership arrangements and agreements and things, I'm a bit confused as to who owns the property right now, and will the property change hands in the future? Will there be a new owner, or is there a new owner now? That's my first question. Being that, I can't believe that Doom would get involved with this program if they didn't know the exact amount of money that they would be saving on taxes, and what they could sell the property for in a few years. They know what they want to sell it for, I'm sure. And it seems to me from this discussion now that the attorneys on the town of the, on the side of the township should know that also. I mean, just from what I picked up now, it seems as if the taxpayers of West Orange are going to be paying, subsidizing, instead of receiving three million dollars a year, let's say two million dollars a year, where the town is only going to be receiving one million dollars a year, which means that the taxpayers of West Orange are paying for fifty percent of the taxes. We are subsidizing fifty percent of the taxes. But the other thing is, this, as one of the attorneys just said, without this pilot program, the deal would not get done, because the pilot program, the subsidy from the taxpayer is raising the value of the building so that Wall Street, the millionaires and billionaires can walk away with a lot more money. Now, you talk about wealth transfer, there's your president up there, and his campaign was, we don't want to transfer. No, Jerry.
Excuse me, excuse me, don't say no, Jerry, okay? We said the proposition, you're talking to the ordinance, we're not talking about the president. We're not talking about Wall Street, we are talking about this ordinance.
Okay.
Keep your remarks to the ordinance.
This ordinance
Thank you.
Is a giant wealth transfer from the people of West Orange, the citizens of West Orange, to this Wall Street firm. And I have nothing against Wall Street firms, they're in business to make money, but you have to think about what you're doing to the people of the town. And I would strongly suggest you find a different financial arrangement than sticking it to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Cafani, thirty-nine Birch Street, West Orange. Let's have a quick question. I want to go back to the abatement issue. I'm unclear as to what the tax responsibility is up to the point where the property is, once the construction is started, and the, you said in two thousand and nineteen, I believe you said, so.
Stabilization.
The point of stabilization, thank you for the word. That what, up to that point, what is the tax responsibility of Prism or whoever the collective partners are in this process? And how does that affect the township? The other piece I wanted to make is that, you know, it seems as though to me, when we look at this process, you know, there's a lot of people in the town who are concerned, and some of the issues that we brought up before seem to still be recurring, and I'm, it's still a little concerned whether or not this new arrangement is going to transpire in a way that's going to facilitate all the things that we need for the downtown area. I think that we still have some problems with the number of units that are going to be down there, and how that's going to affect both the, I know that we talked a little bit about traffic flows and things of that nature, but I think if we look at the, what's going on down there in terms of, we already have traffic issues down there, especially during rush hour, that adding three hundred-plus units there, I still don't think that that's a, the approach that is going to, that's going to facilitate a process that's going to help us in the process. I think it's going to create more problems for the township, and I think that we need to really consider the size of those units. I think that the number of units by size, I mean the number, that the number is still, I think is way too high for that particular area. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Seeing no one else wishing to address the council, I now open it to my council colleagues. Councilman Cirillo?
Yeah, just have a quick question on that, the good point that was made, you just explained for the public's benefit, the taxation prior to the stabilization point. Would ask Mr. Hanley, I guess, or Ms. Credidio to answer that.
The exemption in the agreement, I think it's important to remember that it's an assignment and an assumption of a previous agreement with some modifications which are not modifications to the payment terms of the agreement. But the improvements to be exempted are the improvements to be constructed. So once the adaptive reuse is completed, the structure is exempt, and the pilot is exempt and the pilot or the annual service charge will commence. Prior to that, prior to the improvements being exempt, the existing improvements, there's still a responsibility to pay conventional taxes until the new improvements are constructed.
Right. Then it's your councilman who has-
Absolutely. Conventional taxation-
Conventional taxation till the project makes that-
Until the stabilization period. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Kukoviac.
Well, I just, to Mr. Calfani's point about this ordinance itself, it is not changing the plan. The plan is what the planning board recommended. Again, it's been a while. Recommended to the council, the council approved. So, the plan is not changing. This ordinance is to add a financial partner. So, we're not reviewing the plan. The plan has already been approved. And for those here, the project will consist, I'll just read it, the project will consist of 333 residential units, broken down, 41 studio units at 622 square feet, 151 one-bedroom, one-bath at 820 square feet, 45 one-bedroom, one-bath with a den at 1,154 square feet, 87 two-bedrooms, two baths at 1,259 square feet, and nine, only nine, three bedrooms, two baths at 1,627 square feet. That plan doesn't change, plus the 18,000 square feet in retail space.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Just to answer that question.
Okay. Councilwoman Spango?
You know, you constantly hear people coming in here talking about development, low-income housing, or who's going to move there, which offends me. I hear that constantly. Who's going to move there? Well, whoever moves there and can afford the rent, I'm sure it'll be good residents of township. But the other thing is they talk about the kids. How many more kids are going to go into the school system? If you look in the Gregory neighborhood alone, which I live, there are 32 houses that just turned over to people from New York, and you know how many more kids are coming into the school system? 32. Okay? So, what you're saying is you're worried about building and how many more kids? The population of the school system is increasing just by people moving into West Orange because of the great school system we have and they're bringing their kids. Should I tell people? No, you can't buy a house in West Orange if you have kids. It's not allowed. That's, that's, you know, we're doing it. That's all we hear, is that you're talking about the number of kids. Let's focus on what it's going to do to stabilize, stabilization in the Main Street corridor. This is what the business people and most of the people who live down in the area feel will be beneficial. They feel they need to have new blood in the Main Street corridor. This will give it new blood. And naysayers constantly say, "You're always looking at the negative. Look at the positive." I constantly hear all these negatives. Nobody hears about any of the positives that come before the township council. There are a lot of positives. People, if you're saying that Dune is being so stupid that they're going to invest this kind of money because the project's going to fail, they're not stupid. And whether they're Wall Street people or not, it's happening in every community, all the development. Look at South Orange. You don't think South Orange has pilot? And what they've done? And look at South Orange Avenue. It's one lane each way and they have all that new development going on their corridor. The Main Street corridor needs a shot in the arm. This will give it a shot in the arm. You've got to take a chance. Because let me ask you a question. How about if nothing gets done there and it sits there for years? You know what's going to happen? You don't want to know what's going to happen. Because they can come back and say, "Well, we need an adjustment." Okay? If you say nothing goes on, then they let it sit there and we do nothing for another five years and then it gets worse and worse and worse. Okay? These people are putting, you know, we're putting their trust in them. I believe, I'm sorry, I believe this developer and it's like, everybody wanted a new developer. Well, now you got a new developer. You got somebody who took an interest. And these are not stupid people. They're not successful picking on a project just to fail or what they're going to sell it for. Because please, enough of this Wall Street voodooism and everything else. The fact of the matter is, somebody's taking an interest in the township of West Orange. We're giving them the chance. I believe they will be as successful. I believe people will move down there. It'll stabilize the area. It'll bring new businesses in. Because the first thing a business says, what's the number, what's the volume of people that live in the area? So, but enough with, how many kids are going to come in? More kids are coming into West Orange just in the regular housing market. Okay? I mean, anybody ever asked about West Mill apartment? There's 2,000 units up there. You know how many kids go to the West Orange school system out of there? 16. So, enough with the negatives. Let's look at the positives. Everybody came, you've answered your questions, we've tried to answer your questions. This has been going on for nine years and people are complaining. Let's move forward and get this project done. Because the longer it sits there, it's more of a blight on the Main Street and people pass by, and I hear everybody say that, especially during the St. Patrick's Day Parade, let's put something nice there. Let's put something to facilitate with the Edison Museum. When people come, 75, it's 75,000 people that come a year to the Edison Museum. Let them see something that is a positive in the township of West Orange. And that's all. Yes, Councilwoman?
I just, I just want to make one comment. I think we're kind of losing sight. We're here tonight, we've already approved redevelopment. We've been through that process. Tonight, our job is just to approve a new agreement between the equity partner. Redevelopment has been approved by this council. So, I think we're losing sight of that. It's just to approve the equity agreement, the new agreement with Prism and Dune.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Is this the appropriate time to ask about the proposed 2015 modification agreement, redevelopment agreement? As part of the, as part of the ordinance consideration? It's one of the, it's one of the exhibits, but-
Actually, one of the resolutions.
I'm sorry?
One of the resolutions.
It's one of the resolutions, but we're doing the ordinance first.
So, we want to, we want to save that?
Okay. We're doing the ordinance, we're doing the ordinance first. So, there's no other questions?
I'm sorry, Council President, I do have some questions. I'm just, I apologize. There are so many documents and I have, cannot find my questions about the financial agreement or the Perhaps if you ask the other council people that they-
They're, they're-
Oh, they're done?
I mean, they're done.
I'm ready to vote.
We're ready to vote. I mean, Councilman, I thought these questions were answered when we had the experts and the consultants here, your additional questions, when you had your opportunity to ask them. So-
We're to meet with them.
Question.
Would this be the appropriate time to ask about the funding alternative parameters of the bonds?
Is that part of the ordinance? No. It's not part of the ordinance. Is it part of the ordinance?
No, it is, no, it is not. It's part of the agreement with-
Right, this is not the appropriate time for it. We're only speaking on the ordinance.
What about the projections, the financial projections? Is that part of the financial agreement that, an infrastructure agreement?
They haven't changed.
Well, there was an application that was submitted and it was provided with the copy of the ordinance and form of agreement. Mr. Hanley has, you know, thoroughly reviewed the application and he can speak to that if you have questions regarding the projections.
Yeah. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the actual projections that were contained in this. I wanted to try to find out what, what are the potential, is this not an appropriate time?
It's not, it's not part of the ordinance, Councilwoman.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood.
No, no apology required. So, if there are no other questions, I'd like to get a motion from one of my colleagues.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Okay. Is that a motion to adopt ordinance 2458-15? With the authorizing the amendment, assignment, assumption of financial agreements with respect to certain property, commonly known as the Edison Battery Factory.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes. Shall we go back to resolutions now? So, just for the general public, we're going back to resolutions.
We have to go back to consent agenda.
I'm sorry, to consent agenda. Thank you.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting July 21, 2015.
Consent.
Report of township, I'm sorry, report of township officers, West Orange Municipal Court, May and June of 2015.
Consent.
Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Cirillo?
Is there a reason for executive session tonight?
Yes.
So, number one, we need, we need to pull that, correct?
No.
No? Okay. Well, what I wanted to suggest is since the mayor's here, perhaps we may want to do that early?
Go into executive session?
And wrap this up? Don't you want to wrap this up?
I'm sorry?
I would rather wrap this up.
Let's wrap this up and then go to executive session.
The administration doesn't want to stop the development.
Right.
Right.
Correct. So, I just want to make sure that-
No, it's okay. Are you pulling any resolutions or any questions on resolutions?
But we don't have to pull the executive session resolution.
No.
We can just adopt it. Okay.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes, I'd like to pull Resolution 201, Resolution 202, Resolution 203, Resolution 205, Resolution 207, And I'd like to ask a couple of questions about a couple of other, other resolutions because I'm not sure whether I need to pull those.
Ask your questions.
Okay. There are several labor agreements. Memorandums, understanding of the labor agreements that are on the, on the agenda tonight. There are, excuse me, three of the, three of the agreements, there are, there are five, there are five agreements. One that was added late this afternoon or mid-afternoon today. They all are for four years, stretching from 2014 to 2017. Three of the contracts have 1.5% increases for the employees, whereas the other two don't. And I'm just wondering where that 1.5% in the year 2015 comes from.
Do you, Councilman, do you, which bargaining unit are you referring to?
Okay, these are, these are for the Council 52, Teamsters Local 560-
What resolution is it?
And Public Works 560. They are resolutions 209, 206, and the last one that was added, which I think is 224 tonight.
Councilman, your question is, your question was-
I'm sorry, 221.
Where did the 1.5 come from?
Yes, because these, these agreements tend to be rather uniform in the annual increases. And what we have is five proposed contracts. Three of them have a 1.5% increase in 2015 and the other two don't.
The three with the 1 point?
Okay. Mayor?
If you're referring, comparing them to the uniformed officers collective bargaining agreements, those contracts were structured differently. Although all town employees, all working hard to serve the residents, they all, all our employees have very different functions and the collective bargaining units have very different terms of their contract. So, we attempted, and the unions fortunately agreed, to structure them similarly with the uniformed officers in the second year. Just for clarification, the first year is a zero, the second year is a zero, except with the uniformed officers, we added 1.5% to their holiday pay, which in essence makes it a 1.5. So, the holiday pay isn't structured the same with our non-uniformed officers or non-uniformed employees because they don't, as non-emergency services, they're not required to work on holidays, so they don't get holiday pay. So, where we added something in the second year, first year zero, second year added to the holiday pay, in the non-uniformed officers, we simply gave them a 1.5 because they don't get holiday pay. So, we tried to match them as close as possible, recognizing that each unions have different structures in their contract and, and different terms of their employment.
So, did you do an analysis that showed that the 1.5% for the non-uniformed in 2015 is, will bring approx, will bring the same pay as the 1.62 on holiday pay for the two uniformed?
No. The administration simply said, "We'll offer you 1.5," and they took it after lengthy conversations. There was no analysis that they're not equal collective bargaining unit, units. They come to the task with different qualifications to be police or fire. Every employee brings a different skill set. To say everyone's equal and to make the contracts exactly equal, is it necessarily our goal or is it necessarily realistic?
Okay.
We worked with the unions and we're very proud to say, Mr. Sayers did a great job, Mr. Gross, in coming to terms with all our collective bargaining units pretty quickly and all with very similar terms and what we believe are pretty good contracts. A zero, one and a half, two and a two. Today's market, we think that's pretty good, still keeps us well under cap and we're pretty happy with that, especially following the contracts that just expired, which were also, we believe, to be pretty favorable, protective of the employees, but respectful of the taxpayer.
Would it be, would it be correct to say that 1.5% for all employees for the full year of 2015 is more than the 1.62% increase in holiday pay for the uniformed is more than the 1.62% increase in holiday pay for the uniformed services?
No, because simply by volume and by salary level, the police officers and the firemen tend to be a large proportion, disproportion percentage of the total salary line item that we have each year.
Okay, then I don't want to pull any additional resolutions.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Spango?
I'm good, there's not much left.
No? Councilwoman McCartney?
No, just to comment to commend the administration and the employer unions on these negotiations.
I have done the poll. Madam Clerk?
Could I just ask one more question? It's about Resolution... I'm sorry, it's such a big... It's such a big agenda tonight, and it's... I'm sorry, I'm having trouble keeping up. In... On 218, Resolution 218...
What's the question, Councilman?
I wish I knew Mr. Sayers, and I apologize. Let's just move on, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Councilman.
Well, Joe, on 218, this is the feasibility study, right, about the Prospect Avenue, Mount Pleasant Avenue, Marcella Avenue. Look at that property in conjunction with the engineering services and conjunction with the Public Works Department.
Oh, yeah.
As you know, right, that Public Works is part of this Phase Two of this plan that we have been discussing all evening. What do we do with Public Works? So, this would be the feasibility study to consider.
Can I just ask a question? Because it appears, under the original 2006 redevelopment agreement, the redeveloper agreed to construct and pay for a relocation of the Public Works Department and I believe the animal control facility to someplace outside of the redevelopment area. As far as I can tell, that's not any longer part of the negotiation, so I'm just... I'm trying to put the two together.
It's still part. They never agreed to construct. We're being compensated for the property as part of secondary phases as well as the relocation. So, this, as the councilwoman alluded to, as we all know, Mount Fuji had a fire. It's been vacant for a long time. Some of the other properties there have been acquired by the same property owner. There is large property that most people don't know behind Mount Fuji that's all part of the same property. So, it's almost the geographic dead center of town. Llewellyn Edison's pretty much just about the dead center. So, we thought if redevelopment's finally going to go forward, pending council approval tonight, we are going to have to look at the prospects of relocating the Public Works yard. It's not a bad idea to have it in the center of town, but it's also not a bad idea to maybe occupy some properties that have been vacant, that have not been able to attract development to reopen as a restaurant. So, we need to study that to see if it's feasible, if there's enough land there to not only accommodate the several trucks. I'm not sure if any of the residents have had a chance to visit Public Works and see the number of plow trucks we have lined up. We need a lot of land, but also need offices. So, we're going to see if it makes sense to do that. And hopefully, if redevelopment goes forward, we'll be stuck with the problem, what I think is a very good problem, to have to relocate our Public Works yard. So, we need to be looking at that now, and this is what the study with the council's approval will do, to see if these properties in conjunction with a few contiguous properties all the way up to Marcella could be suitable for a new Public Works yard.
Mr. Lepore said in his letter that accompanied our packets that he... It seemed that it was not going to be enough space to consolidate up there. And so, what he did was he advised the people who were looking at it to consider placing parts of the Public Works and Animal Control offsite.
Right.
So...
We do not think it's enough space, but we do have other options that we're kind of all looking at simultaneously. But we do think, because we've been fortunate to have a large property to house the Public Works yard and the Animal Control Center for many years, we've been spoiled. There's really not a similarly sized land around town. So, we're pretty much thinking that we're probably going to need to combine multiple locations, whether or not we store some vehicles at the environmental center or build a little office there for engineering uses or there is office function for Public Works. So, we really don't know. We're going to keep our options open, but we do think this particular property has a willing property owner to talk with the town about that. And we do think there are benefits to having trucks, especially for snow, centrally located in town. So, we're looking at it.
So, Ms. Credidio, if my reading of the documents is correct, and I thought what Ms. Credidio said this evening was that essentially the non-Phase One portion of the Edison redevelopment area is going to be totally renegotiated.
Well, it's going to be renegotiated. I don't know how different the agreement would look once we completed the negotiations, but obviously Phases Two, Three, and Four are all part of that discussion.
Okay. So, it just raises the issue with me. Wouldn't the compensation for moving the Public Works and Animal Control Center be up for negotiation?
All of Phases Two, Three, and Four are going to be discussed, all aspects.
So, is it possible that we may be jumping the gun, that in the negotiations, that that won't be part of the new agreement?
We don't believe we're jumping the gun because we need to be prepared. And if, in fact, the project is to move forward, we can't simply up and relocate Public Works and the Animal Control in a moment's notice. So, we don't think we're jumping the gun. We know $25,000, respectful of everyone's dollar, but it's not a fortune. It's money we budgeted, and we think we need to be proactive in looking at what the options are going to be. We can't eliminate the Public Works function. We can't eliminate the Animal Control facility. So, we also can't relocate it in a moment's notice.
Yep, okay. Just one more question about Resolution 213. This is the resolution to authorize a professional service contract with Associated Appraisal Group not to exceed $60,000. They've been our appraiser, I think, for a year or two now. Can you tell me how much we spent with them in the previous contract here? Okay. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, Mayor, I do have a question. With the Public Works on Franklin Avenue, is that at capacity?
Yes, that's actually technical. It's actually not Public Works, it's the grounds division of the Rec Department. So, that's why, going way back before any of us paid attention, there's always been the separate facilities because though they serve in many ways the same function, they're actually under separate departments because their functions are maybe more specific to those department. But yet, yes, that facility is pretty much at capacity.
Thank you.
And won't be part of this relocation.
Right.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution 201-15, Resolution authorizing amendment, assignment, and assumption of infrastructure construction agreement was pulled by Councilman Kocovia.
Councilman?
Council President?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
I do want to congratulate our tax collector, Joanga Gliardo...
Yes.
Yes.
For her exemplary service and congratulations on being reappointed. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
She continues to maintain a high collection rate, including PRISM.
Good call out, Councilman. Yes, inclusive.
Thank you for the work that you do.
I'm...
We should have moved that to the front.
Yes, we should have moved that to the front.
I'm sorry.
Jo, we should have moved you to the front.
You are, thank you.
Thank you for your good service to the township.
I don't know what's going on.
Again, I have to apologize. I can't find the questions that I had for 201, so I have to just...
Can you go on to another one, Councilman?
Yeah, well, I called it for a vote, so let's call it for a vote.
You want to call a vote?
Again, I apologize to everybody, it's...
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 201-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carino?
Yes.
Resolution 202-15, Resolution authorizing modification to 2006 redevelopment agreement with PRISM. Councilman Kocovia?
Thank you, I do have my questions for this.
Okay.
And again, I apologize.
You promise?
There's a reference on page 10 of the attachment of the modification agreement that talks about the satisfactory resolution of the pending litigation. And I want to make sure that I understand this because...
I'm sorry, Councilman, page 10, the modification agreement's only three pages.
Yeah, this is the attachment, this is the actual agreement.
So, the 2006 redevelopment agreement, which is attached to the form of... Which will be attached to the form of modification agreement? Or are you perhaps in the Dune RDA?
Yeah, again, I apologize. It's headed Exhibit to Resolution 201-15, Modification Agreement by and Between, and...
This is, we're on 202-15.
I know, but the documents that you sent ahead of the last council meeting in July had different numbers on them.
Right, and I explained.
Right, and it's not a criticism, I know why they changed. I'm just saying that's what... But I see the point you're making, because I'm looking at the document too, and it's... I've got five pages, but it certainly is not 10 pages.
Cover page and...
Let me just ask, I don't have the exact reference to the document, to the attachment. If I could just ask about the pending litigation? Because it goes into a great deal of detail about what happens depending on how the litigation is decided. And perhaps if you could just talk briefly about where the litigation is, what it's going to decide. Within the documents, it talks about what potentially happens to happen satisfactorily. I'm also trying to find out, figure out, what happens if that litigation is decided in favor of the plaintiffs.
Sure, I can speak to that generally. I do think, Councilman, that you are in the Dune RDA. But the... Just because, and it becomes relevant because it impacts different documents in different ways. As we covered at our July 21st meeting, the litigation is currently pending before the State Supreme Court. The township prevailed in Superior Court. They prevailed at the appellate division. It was appealed to the State Supreme Court. Certification was granted in January of 2014. The issue was fully briefed, including with amicus briefs as of February of this year. We have written to the court and asked them to please schedule us. We are the oldest item on their docket, but we are currently waiting for oral argument to be scheduled on that matter.
Okay, so if the litigation is decided by the State Supreme Court in favor of the defendants, which is the township...
Correct.
Then basically, everything moves forward with the project. Is that correct?
I don't... I think you have to specify what you mean by the project.
Okay.
So, with respect to the Phase One project, the... And again, that's the other agreement, but with respect to the Phase One project, the definition of satisfactory resolution of pending litigation was inserted in the documents so that the township did not have an obligation to issue the bonds that were authorized by that ordinance, which I believe is 2354-12. If, unless, and until, that litigation was resolved either by judgment in our favor before the State Supreme Court or judgment in the township's favor upon remand to a lower court. There are, in the Dune RDA, as I'm sure we'll discuss in a minute, there are places in which that financial obligation interacts in a way that it doesn't with respect to the PRISM RDA. What this document does, what the PRISM modification agreement does, is it does principally two things. It is PRISM's agreement that their redevelopment rights in Phase One are now rescinded from them and assigned over to the... or vested in DGP Urban Renewal. And it establishes an agreement between the township and PRISM to renegotiate Phases Two, Three, and Four for a period of six months from the execution of the document. That's principally what this document does.
Okay, so, if you can, as long as we're on the subject, what happens if the decision is in favor of the plaintiffs?
Again, that's a question with respect to the Dune RDA. That's addressed by Section 13.3 of that document, which is the bond contingency. And if the township is unable to issue bonds, whether because of the litigation or because of market conditions, the township agrees in that section to consider in good faith funding alternatives. Funding alternatives are defined in Section 13.3 and at Exhibit J to the document as funding at an amount not to exceed $3,150,000 on terms no less favorable to the township than level dirt service over 30 years not to exceed $175,000 in any year.
Okay, and how would the township come up with that sort of money?
So, the point of the funding alternatives is that we continue to believe that the $6.3 million that was slated for inclusion in the Phase One project is necessary to the Phase One project. We continue to believe that the issuance of the bonds is the most efficient way to do that. If that is impossible, I can't really speculate as to what other funding alternatives may be available to be reached, what the redeveloper or the township may be able to determine at that point in time. But basically, we're saying, in good faith, if we're unable to do what we've agreed to do in this agreement, then we will entertain other options that are no less favorable to us than what we have already agreed to.
So, are you saying that there's a possibility, and this is... The reason I'm asking is I didn't think this was a possibility, that if the decision was... If the legal decision was done in favor of the defendants that basically said the... Well, I'm not a lawyer, and I haven't been directly involved in that, but I thought it was a pretty narrow issue as to whether the town needed to go to the state local finance board to get approval to issue the bonds. I thought it was really simple.
Let me read the exact words, because it's small but critical. One of my partners likes to joke that you never paraphrase a statute, and I don't like to paraphrase a document if I have it in front of me. So, the question was first whether the challenge was time barred, which the trial court and the appellate division found that it was. And the way that the question is framed, if it is found not to be time barred, then they move on to a question of validity of the ordinance. So, the... I'm sorry, now that I've started speaking, I've forgotten your question, Councilman. It's been a long night.
I thought that the State Supreme Court was going to rule on a very narrow issue of whether the town should have gone to the state for local finance board to get approval. And that if that's actually how the ruling was made, then it would be very simple for us to go to the local finance board and ask them for permission, and likely that they would give it to us. So, I'm asking, do I misunderstand the potential for disaster in terms of this Phase One project? That it might be possible that we can't issue those bonds if the court finds in favor of the defendants?
Well, I mean, the documents always contemplated that it may be possible that the bonds were not able to be issued, for example, for market conditions. If the bonds are unable to be issued, whether because the court rules against us or we are required to obtain an approval that we can't obtain, if for whatever reason we're not able to put that amount into the project that we have agreed to do so, and that in Section 13.4, the redevelopers expressly relying upon in starting the redevelopment, you know, up again without using that as a tolling or a force majeure event, you know, they're proceeding forward in reliance on our agreement that if we cannot do what we have agreed previously to do, that we will entertain other alternatives in good faith on those parameters that are set forth in the exhibit.
Okay, so you mentioned market conditions, that we couldn't issue general obligation bonds. I'm sure we could do that, that wouldn't be the problem. I would also be surprised if the State Supreme Court ruling or a lower court, if it was remanded, would say, "You can't issue bonds in support of this project unless, you know, you put it to a referendum."
Yeah, I can't speculate as to what the Supreme Court or a lower court on remand might do.
I'm just trying to get an idea from you of what could be the possible permutations that would prevent us from doing this.
I mean, I think our possible outcomes under the Dune RDA as presented are we will either have the ability to issue the bonds, and we will do so. And if we do not have that ability, we will consider other alternatives on those parameters. Those are the questions before us.
If I could just ask, Mr. Gross, would there be any other way to raise and fund $3.15 million for 30 years without going general obligation?
First thing, I think part of this is we don't know what we don't know. I mean, you know, trying to anticipate... This agreement tries to anticipate all possibilities, and we don't know what we don't know. So, I think it's fair to say that that's what the wording in there means. In terms of what other alternatives are there, again, it's difficult to say what alternatives we would have because it would depend on what our economic situation was at the time. It really is because we don't know what we don't know, I can't even really respond to that.
Yeah, I couldn't think of any other way that we could raise the money without issuing debt for 30 years. We couldn't borrow short term because I think the state law says you have to pay it off in 10 years or less.
You know, I just... It's really difficult to comment on because I don't know. I don't even know what I would be... What hole am I looking to fill when I don't even know?
Okay. So, we basically just negotiated, but we have no idea... So we basically just negotiated, but we have no idea how we would fulfill that obligation?
Well, obviously, any, any other borrowing that the township may do would require separate authorization from this body. I mean, what you're committing to is that you are going to carry out the obligations you've previously agreed to with respect to Phase One. If you're not able to do that, you'll, you'll entertain other options in good faith.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 202-15?
Someone.
Second.
Councilman Cervillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
Resolution 203-15, resolution authorizing redevelopment agreement with DGP Urban Renewal LLC. Hold by Councilman.
Now can we finally talk about something that I have my questions for? There's, on page 18, Article 5, Section 5-1C2, on page 18. It says, "Upon such termination," and what it's talking about is the termination of the exclusive right to redevelop, I believe it's Phase One.
I'm sorry, Councilman, my pronunciation might be a little different. You said 5-1C, remand at 2?
Yes.
Okay.
It says, "Upon such termination, the town shall have the right, but not the obligation, I, or one, to purchase Edison battery parcels from redeveloper for an amount equal to the purchase price paid for the Edison battery parcels plus architectural, engineering, demolition, and construction costs." And then it says, so I just want to ask you about that. Because if we were to purchase these parcels at the prices that PRISM paid, it would amount to millions and millions of dollars and it would probably be at a much higher amount than the property is worth now, particularly since PRISM is, has active tax appeals on both the PRISM, the 175 Main Street property and also the 55 Lakeside. So I'm just trying to conceive why we would ever consider doing that.
So it's just a, an option for the municipality, another tool for you in the event that that occurred. Basically, why it is the purchase price plus some of these costs. And this language is consistent with the modification agreement and also consistent with the 2006 agreement. It's basically, you're setting a cost at the amount that's gone into the property exclusive of profit. So it is an option. I would imagine you would likely exercise such an option if you had a potential other redeveloper that you were foreseeing would redevelop the property and that you would transfer the property to them. But it's just an, an option for the municipality to be able to acquire that property in that circumstance.
But, but don't most redevelopment projects that, that terminate the property, if it's owned outright by the terminated redeveloper, don't they just sell it to the new redeveloper?
Well, they-
Without going through the middle, ma'am?
They could. And there is contemplation in the document that Dune, in the event of the occurrence of the events set forth in this Section 5.1, they could bring a successor redeveloper to the township for the township's review and approval. But if for some reason they were not able to find a successor redeveloper and the township thought that they might be able to, or they might have other things or other plans, they might be able to use that, that building for, it gives the township an option, nothing more. They're not obligated in any way to make that purchase. And it doesn't foreclose the possibility of any successor redeveloper. In fact, it gives you another tool to help make that a possibility.
Okay. And then the second part of this was that the township has the right to seek proposals from other developers and to amend the redevelopment plan if necessary or desirable to do so, which amendments might include changes in use density and other planned provisions affecting the redevelopment of the parcels, provided however that any such amendments or terms agreed to by the township shall not be more favorable to the new developer than terms redeveloper proposed during the tolling renegotiating period, the which the township rejected. And provided further that in the event more favorable terms or amendments are negotiated, nothing herein shall prevent the township from utilizing such terms or amendments to solicit bids for the redevelopment of the parcels, so long as redevelopers among those whose bid is solicited. What I don't understand about this is that if the, if the redeveloper is terminated, I guess, let's just say for non-performance, why would we want to include them in the search for a successor redeveloper? Particularly where it looks like they would have, I'm sorry, I, I do pause and I apologize. It's, makes it difficult to respond to me. Why we would do this if, if we're basically giving the, the failed redeveloper equal standing to potentially do it to us again?
Well, so this section, I mean, you always have an obligation of good faith and fair dealing in your contracts. And this section sort of amplifies that or lays it out. But what you read, Councilman, basically what it's preventing against is during the tolling or renegotiation period, you know, the redeveloper proposes a particular change to the plan and the township says, "No, we're not going." And they say, "This, this change to the plan would allow this project to go forward and we say no." And then we terminate them, make the change they asked for, and allow someone else to build it, which just is fundamentally inequitable. So that is all this language seeks to protect against. That if we were going to then do exactly what we were asked to do and had refused to do, that we will allow them to, to participate in the bidding process, not necessarily award a bid to them, but allow them to participate in that process.
Okay, thank you. On page 25, and again, there's no cite that precedes this, but it says, "The township recognizes and acknowledges that financing for the Phase One project is likely to include one or more equity participations, blah, blah, blah." And it says, "The township agrees to consider such financing."
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman.
I have it on page 25.
25 electronically or 25 at the bottom of the page?
What section, please?
You're asking the person that has had trouble all night finding these documents. And I apologize.
Joe, what section are you?
It, that's what I was saying.
These are not numbered.
Yeah, and I didn't put it in my notes. I just had page 25. But it should be pretty easy to, to, I just read the provision. It says, "The township agrees to consider such financing arrangements in good faith." And what I wanted to ask you-
I'm sorry, Councilman, without knowing where we are.
Page 26 of the agreement, middle of the page. It's Article 8.1.
It's at the bottom of that.
So the township agrees to, agrees to, agrees to consider such joint venture arrangements? Is that where you are, Councilman?
No. I've got the quote here, but I can't find the original source document.
Joe, read your sentence and-
I've already read it twice and I don't think it's going to satisfy our, our-
Okay. Township agrees to consider such financing agreement in good faith and unless such transfer is already permitted by Section 8.2? Is that what you're reading? Will not unreasonably withhold or delay its consent to such arrangements?
Councilwoman, where are you reading from?
I'm reading from, electronically, they're not numbered.
Are you at this end of Section 8.4?
Article 8, yes.
Township recognizes and acknowledges financing of the Phase One project is likely to include one or more equity participations, mezzanine debt? Okay, great.
Yes.
That's right.
And then the next sentence is, "The township agrees to consider such financing arrangements in good faith." It's really a simple question. The, the, the documents include a proposal that lists equity and financing and the general obligation bonds. Is that what we are approving tonight? Because this seems to indicate that something is coming down the pike.
It's just a, a potential catch-all. There's, there's no, what we have presented tonight, what you've just recapped, Councilman, is what is expected. But for example, this same language was in the modification agreement. If there were to be historic tax credits, historic tax credits require certain structures that may not be permitted transfers under Article 8 or may, you know, may slightly diverge from one of the terms. And, and that's all that this, that this document does is, you know, what we have discussed is what we are anticipating. But if there is for, and historic tax credits are probably the best example, if there was another source of funding and, you know, they, they proposed it to us, we would consider it in good faith. As if, with respect to, this whole Article 8 deals with transfers.
Okay. But the papers they filed propose that capital structure that I just mentioned.
That's correct.
And, and that's what we're voting on today. It's not like they're going to come back at the next council meeting and say we have a, a different capital structure.
Well, I mean, you're, you're not really voting on their capital structure. But yes, that is the, the transaction that has been presented, correct.
Okay. Section 8.2, it's the exemption from participative transfers. I've got it on page 26.
Yep.
Section E. I, I have to say, this is the most confusing to me of any of the doc, any of the copy that I've read in all of these documents, going back since I've been reading them. I'm not even going to read that, but maybe you could just tell me what, what it means.
Subsection E is intended to address transfers in ownership among the Dean, the Dune, Greenfield, and PRISM members. And the intent was to allow some flexibility. It is a joint venture between the Dune, PRISM, and Greenfield members. And they may want to make certain transfers among them with respect to ownership. What this does is sets forth the parameters for their notice to the township for certain of those transfers. For example, let's take them one by one. On seven days prior written notice to the township, transfers of management or control rights in DGP Edison, which is the ownership entity of DGP Urban Renewal, among the DREF members, basically the Dune member, the Dune Real Estate Fund member, the Greenfield member, and the PRISM member, so long as the redeveloper is still controlled by basically a Dune member or a Greenfield member. So this transfer can't, can't serve to remove Dune or Greenfield from the structure. That, that's what that, that's what that, that's what that first piece does.
Okay.
Subsection 2, E, remand at 2, on 14 days prior written notice, transfer interest, again, in DGP Edison, which is the company that wholly owns DGP Urban Renewal, among, again, the Dune member, the Greenfield member, and the PRISM member, so long as it's not more than 10%. So that's fairly straightforward. And then in remand at 3, not more than 10% of direct or indirect beneficial ownership.
And this requires them to give notice to the township?
On, on certain parameters. Under those parameters, you know, they may make some transfers among themselves.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I couldn't make heads or tails.
Yeah, it's, it's dense, definitely.
Then just below it, Section 8.4, 8.4, I have it on page 28.
Okay.
It talks about a pledge of membership interest in the redeveloper, DGP Edison, or related security interest granted to redeveloper, DGP Edison, to a lender for the purpose of obtaining the financing necessary to enable redeveloper to perform its obligations under this agreement, including any liens and encumbrances granted, provided that, I'm just trying to shorten it, give the township at least 15 days prior written notice. But it doesn't allow the township, it doesn't provide the township consent to these, to these changes?
That, that's correct.
Okay. And I'm, I'm a little bit concerned of that because if you, if you make a pledge or if you incur liens, you provide a security interest, that can potentially mean bad things. That can mean, you know, if the debt's not paid, the lender can take back the collateral and that could result in big changes for the redevelopment entity. So I'm trying to figure out why we wouldn't be, have more, more consent to, to things like that.
Well, it's consistent with the other pieces of 8.4. 8.4 and consent to permitted transfers is intended to enable the redeveloper to get the private financing that's required for the remainder of the capital stack. So you see other examples in, you know, remand at 1, our mortgage or other interests, equity interests in remand at 2 for tax credits. So it's just allowing them to pledge, you know, their membership interests in, in the LLC are another piece of collateral that are sometimes used as pledges in, in these kinds of complex real estate transactions. And we're just giving them the ability to pledge their collateral in order to finance the project.
But I do understand this correctly that if things went bad and those pledges were called and, and the collateral was taken back by the lender, it would result in significant changes potentially to the redevelopment entity, correct?
For, so for example, your lender, if you pledged your membership interest, could it foreclose on your equity interest? And then they would therefore succeed to your shoes in, in the entity? That's correct.
Okay. So that to me would be, make a significant change in this. And I'm just trying to figure out why we wouldn't want to potentially consent to basically them providing this security?
Councilman, I, I think that fundamentally, conceptually, it's not really different from the concept of having a mortgage on the property, in which case there's a default and you have a lender who succeeds to the property. I mean, it's really sort of conceptually the same thing. In both instances, you have a pledge of collateral that exists with respect to the project that's being pledged to a private lender in order for them to infuse dollars into the project to, to allow it to be complete.
Right. I, I'm just, I'm trying to look at the potential downside. It could be that, that, that something goes bad, the collateral gets called away and all of a sudden, the controlling partner is someone from Saudi Arabia or something, has totally different ideas about what to do with the project. So I'm just trying to figure out, is that theoretically possible?
Well, I mean, if they succeed to their membership interest, the, the agreement is still binding upon the-
Okay.
And we still don't own it.
We still don't own it?
Yeah, correct, yes.
Of course.
I'm not saying that we, meaning the township, would own it. I'm just saying it could be a different owner of the redevelopment entity.
But they'd still be responsible.
And it could happen without our approval. I mean, we've been going through all of this in order to approve the new, the new people. I'm just saying, once you lend this out, if they lose the collateral, we could wind up with a totally different entity. I don't think it's going to happen. The Dune people have a strong track record. But I'm just wondering why we wouldn't have the consent and- So that's okay. Could be moved down to Section 10.3 on page 33. It talks about the force majeure event, third-party litigation. And this section doesn't define third-party litigation. So when we say litigation related to this, we're thinking about the petitioners who challenged the issuance of the bonds before referendum. And that's an out of the Supreme Court.
That is not, the pending litigation, the currently pending litigation is not a force majeure event, and that's provided elsewhere in the agreement. I believe it's in perhaps 4...
Right, no, you're right. I'm not asking about that.
Oh, yes, okay.
I'm asking about what it says here in 10.3. It says, "In the event, the force majeure event is third-party litigation in all timeframes, basically go out the window and everything stops. The construction stops, all progress stops until the litigation is settled." Now, the litigation we've got before us now, I think, has been going on about three years. So I would hate the project to be sitting around for another three years. But my point is that it does not define third-party litigation.
Correct. Third-party litigation being litigation against disagreement, the project filed by a third party, not either of the two parties to disagree.
Right. So when I say it's not defined, I'm thinking, say, a subcontractor puts a lien and then follows through with a lawsuit. Would that be something that would be a third-party litigation that could potentially stop this?
I don't believe that subcontractor litigation, the whole point of a force majeure event, right, let's take it back up to a 30,000-foot level. It's an event that prevents you from moving forward with the project. So a tort claim, for example, is not necessarily something that would prevent you from moving forward with the project. Unless it was perhaps of such magnitude that there was no way that the project could proceed. I mean, that's the whole concept of the force majeure issue. This language is really intended to address, you know, there is a lawsuit that basically addresses the ability of the parties to carry out their obligations under this agreement, not your conventional course of business litigation.
Okay. So I guess what you're saying is, the force majeure defines what third-party litigation? It's not any third-party litigation, it's just what might be considered to be force majeure, to have a major impact?
Yeah, all force majeure, whether litigation or whether or acts of God are, by their nature, acts that don't allow an obligation to be met or the project to proceed.
Okay. Moving down to Section 13.2, being, I guess, Roman numeral I. It says, "It's a satisfactory resolution pending litigation, or the township has undertaken a separate authorization for the issuance of the Phase 1 bonds, substitute Phase 1 bonds."
A separate ordinance. For example, if you decided to adopt a new ordinance and you decided to adopt a new ordinance with a trip to local finance board in the middle. It would not be the existing ordinance, but it would be bonds that were issued pursuant to, similar bonds that were issued pursuant to a different...
Okay. So it's not a different form of financing, it simply would be the same thing, only a substitute?
Correct.
Councilman, not to interrupt you, but you had an opportunity to talk to the council before. Mr. The administration, everybody else had the legal department and these people available. Why weren't these questions answered before instead of tonight?
Well, as you may recall, at our last council meeting, it surfaced that Mr. Kaiser, our Assistant Town Attorney, basically was telling our redevelopment council that she should have, only, give me only minimal information.
No, no, but I'm saying, but the administration has told you could have met with them, no holds bar thing. Am I right, Mr. Sayers? He was given the opportunity, like all of us were to meet with the council?
Sure, sure. And the last time, the last time we had the meeting, and I, there may be some people in that room, I basically could get very little information when I met with them. This is going back a few months. So I just decided that it seemed to be better for me to just ask the questions. Now, I'm getting close to the end here.
I'm sure Ms. Credilla would give you, but, yes, Councilwoman?
It's not fair.
Did you want to say something else?
The last question I had, if I can move on, is Section 13.5, page 41, it's the litigation costs. I wanted to ask how, I thought I had seen a couple of different places how the litigation costs were going to be handled. And I just wanted to see if I can get clear, because I've seen some sections that say, and I can't cite them right now, that basically just says that the redevelopers handles all the litigation costs. Then other sections say, describing a split of the litigation costs between the two parties depending on the outcome. And I'm just trying to figure out which one, which method is being handled here. I think Council President said a little earlier in the meeting that the litigation costs have been almost $2 million.
I'm sorry, I can't speak to the litigation costs.
That's what he said.
For the pending litigation, I...
Right. So my question is, how are the costs of the litigation to be split between the redevelopers and the township going forward? My understanding is that the proposal was that the redevelopers handles all the litigation and helps fund whatever litigation the township, litigation costs the township has. And then maybe you could just describe how things would be split?
If you look at Section 13.5, Section A and subsection B address litigation costs arising from separate causes of action. So 13.5B specifically addresses third-party litigation challenging the execution of this agreement, the designation hereunder of Dune as redevelopers, the designation of the redevelopment area or the redevelopment plan. And that is where, as you've identified, Councilman, there is a share of those costs and a reconciliation at the conclusion of the litigation.
Okay. So if such litigation is finally conclusively resolved in favor of the township, redevelopers shall reimburse the township for the township's share of the litigation costs. If such litigation is finally conclusively adversely resolved, the township shall reimburse redevelopers for redevelopers' share of the litigation costs. So what I'm trying to figure out, and I didn't, I've read this before, and I didn't think much of it because what I was getting was that there was very little chance that the defendants would win the case. But now that I keep reading within the documents that there's the potential for the defendants to win, I'm just trying to figure out what the financial implications would be for the town if, say, we lost, we did not prevail.
So I guess let's not conflate, this 13.5B that you're referencing is specifically litigation challenging the execution of this agreement, designation of the redevelopers, designation of the area or the plan. So the pending litigation is none of those things. It is challenging the adoption of ordinance 2354-12.
So is that treated differently than how, any sort of litigation about what we're deciding on tonight?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Are they treated differently?
Yes. So Section 13. A is other litigation. 13.5B is just those particular causes of action that are enumerated there.
For what we're considering tonight?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 203-15?
Some move.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Resolution 205-15, resolution authorizing the execution of a license and access agreement that allows the township to build and maintain a sign at the Luke Oil Gas Station located at the corner of Eagle Rock Avenue and Pleasant Valley Way. Councilman Krokovia?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to know sort of where this idea came from and how much it's costing the town, or how much it potentially could cost the town.
This idea came from the administration, simply to help beautify the town. We plan, one of the things that's, I happen to think is pretty special about our community is the number of different neighborhoods we have with their own personalities and their own histories. So we hope to highlight as many neighbors as we can. And we thought this particular corner, well-traveled, to have a "Welcome to Pleasantdale, West Orange" sign is a good idea. The property owner agreed. It's going to cost us maybe $18,000, $20,000. It was in capital budget, as part of the capital budget line items, to beautify that corner, to maintain it, and to make it look good. So we plan on doing that in several of our neighborhoods.
Good night and thank you.
Good night and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
President, on that same resolution, is the township planning on adding more options, some more signs throughout town, just to build pride and...
That's the hope, yes.
That's the hope.
That's the goal. Terrific. I like the design, and it includes the logo.
Right.
It's nice. Really nice.
Is it going to say Pleasantdale, New Jersey, or Pleasantdale, West Orange? West Orange.
Township of West Orange.
Nice idea.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 205-15?
Some move.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
207-15, resolution authorizing execution of memorandum of agreement with West Orange Fire Superior Officers Association. Councilman Krokovia?
Thank you. I just noticed in reviewing this proposed four-year labor agreement that it proposes to provide overtime to the township's deputy chiefs. And I wondered whether we had ever offered overtime to the deputy chiefs before?
Councilman, it doesn't provide overtime. They already get overtime. What it does, it allows them to get their longevity payment into their overtime. They were the only unit in any bargaining unit that doesn't include longevity with their overtime. Captains get it, firefighters get it, police get it, non-uniform workers get it. The only people who never got it, for some reason, were deputy fire chiefs. And there's four of them, I think, there were four or five of them right now. So all it does is it allows them, as part of the contract, allows them to get overtime. When they get paid their overtime, it gets paid on not just their base salary, but also their longevity pay.
So the reason I'm asking is I just, you know, I think we have like maybe five, do we have five deputy chiefs now?
I think it's five.
Yeah. That's been a big increase just in the last couple of years. But I just was looking at...
We used to have seven.
We used to have seven. It's not a big increase, so...
We had one, maybe, what, three years ago?
No.
No.
Four years ago? You've never had one deputy chief?
Absolutely not.
No, sir.
What's the lowest number of deputy chiefs you've had?
Seven. We had seven when I got here.
Not the highest, I mean the lowest, in just the last five or six years.
Probably four. Because you have to have one for every tour.
Okay. I was just asking because the 2015, the minimum salaries for this position is $111,000. The maximum is $125,000. And if you've got EMT certification, it's another $3,000. So the guys, they have big responsibilities, but they do make a lot of money. I'm just curious, did the township do a analysis of how much this is going to cost additionally?
What, for their longevity pay?
Yeah.
No. This was more than anything an equity issue with the unions. They felt that their deputies have, for whatever reason, as Jack indicated, this was a mistake years ago. This one rank in this one collective bargaining unit was not getting that included in their overtime. And they simply asked to be equitable with the rest of their particular ranks within their unit, as well as the firefighters, as well as all the other units in the community.
Okay.
We did not do an analysis. We simply agreed to make it equal.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Council President?
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 207-15?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango votes yes. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Carina?
Yes.
Resolution 211-15, resolution authorizing execution of access and use agreement with the Huntington County Educational Services Commission. Madam Clerk, Krokovia?
Yeah, there's a, thank you, there's a provision in the contract that allows the Huntington County Educational Services Commission, this is to provide them radio telecommunications access on a town, on town property. And there's a provision in there that allows the Huntington County Educational Services Commission to make the payment, it's $7,200 for the one-year period, allows them to make the payment either directly to the school district or to offset an invoice with the school district or with the township. And I'm just trying to figure out why that would be, that even though it's town property, the revenue from this would be going to the school district and not the township?
The money basically comes to the township. We're getting $600 a month from them. It's a $7,200 a year contract, and they send us $600 per month. And all they're doing is putting a repeater on our tower because they're the bus company that transports all our kids to, for the Board of Education.
No, I understand that. It's just, it's a town asset, it's not a school district asset. I'm just wondering why...
What section of the agreement are you talking about?
It says, "They have agreed to pay the township..."
Keep reading.
"...in access and use of rate of $70,200 on one-year term, to be paid in equal monthly installments."
I don't believe you're...
"Agreed to pay the township."
Are you reading from the...
I'm reading from the resolution that we're voting on.
But are you reading from the contract?
What they're saying is, is whatever invoices, I understand what you're saying. The money comes to the township. But the second part, it's on page one, actually, Section 2 of the access agreement. It says installment of $600 on the first day of the month in advance to the township, or, or, shall come in the form of a reduction in any invoice issued to the township or the Board of Education. So if they're issuing invoices to us for the bus services, we can either take the reduction from the invoice or get the $600 upfront. We're taking the $600 upfront. That's what we're doing.
But do you agree with me that the contract does say it gives the option of them paying it to the school district?
Correct, it does. Issued to the township or the West Orange Board of Education.
Okay.
But they pay us the $600 per month. The "or" is they're paying the township $600 per month. The section says "or," it doesn't say "and." So we're taking $600 per month as per the contract.
Right, but the way, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have the contract in front of me. This has been a bad night for...
You want to look at it?
Document key. Yes, thank you.
Joe, here.
Thank you. Yes. Councilwoman McCartney was kind enough. Okay, so it says, "to be paid in equal monthly installments of $600 on the first day of the month in advance to township, or shall come in the form of a reduction in any invoice issued to the township or the West Orange Board of Education."
Right. So we chose to take the $600 to the township upfront. That's what we chose.
That's what the contract says, it's giving you that option, but what we're voting on... That's what the contract says, it's giving you that option, but what we're voting on says they agreed to pay the township. So that's what we're voting on. That's the part of the contract that we are taking.
Okay, so why is there this clause that says "shall come in the form of a reduction in any invoice to the township or the West Orange Board of Education?"
My guess is that it's probably a standard contract that they make out. In some places, they pay directly to the Board of Education, in other places, they pay directly to the township. That would be my guess.
It's the Hunterdon County Educational Services Commission, so I'm assuming that it used to deal with the school district.
It's a standard contract. Correct. It's a standard contract.
And in this case, we're taking that first option.
Right. I'd, I'd be happy to, to vote approval for this if we take out the clause. If you're telling me that the only way they can do this is to send the money to the township, this doesn't...
That's exactly what we're doing.
I know, but the, the contract doesn't say that.
Yes, it does. It says "or." It says "or." The word "or" means you can do it one way or the other way. We have already agreed with them to do it the way we want them to do it, and that is to send us six hundred dollars a month to the township.
Okay.
And that's what we're voting on.
Okay. No further questions?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 211-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilwoman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Resolution 217-15, resolution to request that the West Orange Planning Board investigate the Eagle Rock slash Prospect Avenue area as an area in need of redevelopment slash rehabilitation investigation. Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes. I'm a black hole tonight with documents, you're right to get it back. I, I just, I sincerely question any time or effort or money we spend to evaluate that section of town for redevelopment. First of all, when something qualifies for redevelopment, it qualifies for potentially huge advantages. We see it right now, the redevelopment agreement that we have tonight, where we're providing the six point three million dollars in general obligation taxpayer guaranteed bonds, and we're also giving them a thirty-year tax abatement that is worth millions of dollars. And the section that we're talking about is a number of properties in the intersection, around the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue and Prospect Avenue that includes the new CVS, which must have cost several hundred thousand dollars to construct. Down a little bit west, we have a, a small shopping center that also represents, I'm sure, hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of recent investment. We have, going east on Eagle Rock Avenue, we have the Eagle Rock Donor, which closed, but which somebody else has come in and has told this council that they're going to be making substantial investment in renovating the property. So I just went to the redevelopment law itself, and I just want to read you what is supposed to, it's supposed to be for redevelopment areas. "The governing body of the municipality by resolution concludes that within the delineated area, any of the following conditions is found. The generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or possess any of such characteristics, or are so lacking in light, air, or space as to be conducive to unwholesome living and working conditions. B, the discontinuance of the use of buildings previously used for commercial manufacturing and industrial purposes, the abandonment of such buildings, or the same being allowed to fall into so great a state of disrepair as to be untenable. Land that is owned by the municipality, the county, the local housing authority, redevelopment agency, redevelopment entity, or unimproved vacant land that has remained so for a period of ten years prior to adoption of the resolution, and that by reason of its location, remoteness, lack of means of access to developed sections or portions of the municipality, or topography or nature of the soil, is not likely to be developed through the instrumentality of private capital." The township owns some property out there. It, it fronts Prospect Avenue. It, it can't have any greater access to one of our most heavily traveled roads than that piece of property. Areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, fault arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use or obsolete layout, blah, blah, blah.
Excuse me, Council President, uh, yeah.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody could call that section...
Point of personal privilege?
Yes, sir. Councilman...
Thank you, Council President. We're not declaring the area as being in need of rehabilitation, but rather, we're performing a preliminary investigation...
Correct.
...by professionals.
Right.
Okay? Professionals and members of the planning board.
Right.
Nobody's declaring that area as an area in need of rehabilitation. There's no need to be reading...
It's just an investigation. It's just an analysis.
...the state redevelopment law at this point in the process. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
So the properties that we're talking about include the CVS property, include Mayfair Farms, include the shopping center at, at that intersection, all of them, you know, that has to be one of the most strong economic portions of our town, as can be. And I just, I don't, I don't think this is appropriate, an appropriate thing for us to be doing, so I just...
And just vote no. Let's take a vote.
If you're gonna vote no, Councilman, I understand, and you're welcome to that, sir.
Mayor, what were you gonna say?
Mayor, do you need to say it?
I think you already said it.
He's answering our question. Do we wait until it's fallen down and condemned before we look at it? Several of the property owners have expressed interest to invest money, some are looking to sell.
Right.
So we thought it better now to get in the game than everyone curse when another CVS is there. So we consider, we can all sit back and say it's a wonderful neighborhood and everything's doing great. Well, some of the property owners say they're not doing great. So they'd like to explore options to improve their viability and ultimately the town's position when they're viable. We heard that earlier tonight. Viable businesses are good for the town. So maybe, maybe I'm wrong. You can vote no. But isn't it now the time to continue to see that that neighborhood stay strong?
Right.
We're not, we're not condemning any of the properties. We're not saying or alleging any of the properties are condemned. We're simply saying several of the property owners in that area, including, we own property that we think we really need to invest a little money on and do things right.
Right.
There's a big, there's two big properties there who we're talking about selling. So we think it's better to have a role in that process than all curse the day when another business closes and something else comes and everyone says, "Well, we don't want that." So isn't it better to be involved in the process than not involved in the process?
Well, you're doing your needs assessment right now.
That's what we're doing.
You're doing your needs assessment.
That's what we're doing.
Am I correct, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Council President, I want to add to that, Mayor, real quick, that tonight we also approved the street improvements to that neighborhood. So we are investing in the neighborhood. We're thinking ahead, and I think it's wise...
True.
...in terms of policy decisions, to think ahead, but we're just planning.
Yes. Just planning.
Thank you, Council President.
You're very welcome, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 217-15?
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 2456-15, and ordinance amending Chapter Four, Section 34.3 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange entitled "Extra Duty Employment for Police Officers." Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance 2456-15? Seeing none. Any of my colleagues have any comments on ordinance 2456-15?
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is the ordinance for extra duty employment for police officers. When this came around first time, I did vote no, because it was based on the manual for uniform traffic control devices. Nowhere in that manual does it say that a police officer has to be, has to be assigned as a control device. It talks about signage and everything else. So it might, it's really a question that when bids go out, can we put in our bids the option, I'll see my notes, can we put in the bid the option that, out of the eight hundred and sixty-one pages of that manual, on page six, six fifty-eight, it talks about a flagger or a uniform law enforcement officer. Is it possible to add both? I'm not opposed to them seeking the extra funds, but is there a way that we can allow companies to decide what they want to use? Or do we do that already?
We can only do an allocation of dollars in our contracts for, for traffic directors. I have to go back and look and see whether, you know, whether, whether the verbiage actually specifies police as opposed to, I don't know the answer for that. It's kind of a, it's a gentle question to this ordinance, but I can find out.
It is. It is. It is. But there isn't anything in here that says we have to use a police officer. I'm just saying that people, right.
They're usually left to the...
With the vet.
Okay. And do they get that option?
Oh, I got yours.
I'm just saying, do, when we send out bids, do they have the option?
No, that was it. That's it.
Do we have a little bit more?
Okay.
Oh, wait, this is yours. You're right.
Okay.
I just want to give them the option.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
Nope. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a, is there a motion to adopt resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance 2456-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances 2457-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic, Section Seven dash eleven, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets During Certain Hours, Section Seven dash fourteen point one, Night Parking Restricted, and Section Seven dash fourteen point two, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours on Certain Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Sir, Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is there anyone here from the general public wishing to speak on ordinance 2457-15? Seeing none, I open it to my council colleagues. Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2457-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2459-15, and ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain Township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to adopt on first, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Chair.
I seconded, sorry.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2460-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic, Subsection Seven dash thirty-two point two, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Handicap Parking, Eighteen Dean Street and Forty-Six Riggs Place. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?